Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo.
Here.
Councilmember Neres.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Mayor Proton Funk.
Here.
Mayor Moreno.
Here. All present. Thank you. Well, for those of you attending in person, welcome. And if you are on Zoom, listening on KPRL Charter Channel 20 or streaming on YouTube, we welcome you as well and glad that you're with us tonight. If you would like to speak by phone during community forum or public comment for any one of the items that is on our agenda, go ahead and give you that phone number right now. It is area code 669-900-6833. Once again, area code 669-900-6833. And when you call in, you'll be asked for a meeting ID, and that is 889-2347-9018. Again, the meeting ID is 889-2347-9018. I will ask our city attorney if there's anything to report from our April 9th closed session.
There's nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to our one presentation, which is our National Public Works Week. And I've asked Councilmember Borbo to give this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something near and dear to my heart. I think everybody realizes, everybody uses public works or is served by public works basically every day of their lives. So this is a proclamation for National Public Works Week, May 19th to 25th, 2024, Advancing the Quality of Life for All. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are the backbone of commerce and are of vital importance to the vibrant and resilient communities and to the public health and high quality of life and the well-being of the people of Atascadero. Whereas the infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, wastewater collection and treatment systems, solid waste parks, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our society. And whereas public works is considered the silent arm of public safety, providing vital support to emergency response partners, protecting essential services and restoring those services following an emergency, sometimes first on scene and often last to leave. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in Atascadero to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the Public Works Association, now therefore be it resolved that we, the City Council of the City of Atascadero, do hereby designate May 19th to 25th of 2024 as National Public Works Week. And I encourage all citizens to join the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and advancing quality of life for all. Signed Heather Moreno, Mayor of the City of Atascadero. And thank you, Nick, for everything you and your team does for our citizens.
And maybe Director DeMar, you could let us know about some events coming up in the city related to public works.
Sure. So a couple of things. Next week, we have a, this is one of the posters that National Public Works Week have. So we're going to have this in the Saffron Reception during next week, during National Public Works Week. And then also on Wednesday from three to six during Farmer's Market, we're going to have some of the equipment and our maintenance guys and wastewater operators and some of those things, plan of the El Camino project out in front of City Hall. So if anybody's interested, stop by. We'd love to talk to you.
That's great. So that would be next Wednesday, the 22nd, May 22nd, from three to six PM downtown Sunken Gardens. Well, not in Sunken Gardens, but in front of City Hall. So, all right. Thank you, Director. Right. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar contains items that are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff and can be acted upon in one single action of the city council, unless there's a member of the council wishing to pull an item for separate consideration. Public comment on consent calendar items will be invited prior to consent being passed. So right now I will go ahead and open up public comment for consent items only. Anyone wishing to speak on the consent calendar. I'm seeing no one in the chambers. I'm going to look on Zoom. Is there anybody wishing to speak? You could raise your hand. This is again regarding the consent calendar. I'm not seeing any, no phone callers, correct? Luke, okay. I was going to call you Nick. That's not the right, not the right name. All right. So I'll go ahead and close public comment. Any members of the, of council wishing to poll?
I don't want to poll. I just want to mention that, that I did give the clerk a small correction in the minutes. So the, the correct title of the, of the organization that Councilmember Borbo filled in for me yet.
Do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
I'm of approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Proton Funk. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Neres.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I will move on to updates from the city manager, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I do have a few things. First, we want to kick off tonight talking about the Tamale Festival, another huge success, our eighth annual Tamale Festival. We have some fun pictures here of the trophies were incredible, the tamales were incredible, celebration in town was great. And we had a little bit of rain, of course, but nonetheless, we had a great time and sold lots of tamales and celebrated our community spirit. I want to thank our sponsors. We had gold sponsors, Avala Traffic Safety, Kirk Consulting. Thank you to both of them, our gold sponsors, our silver sponsors, AM Sun Solar, Spring Hill Suites by Marriott, Waste Management, and our bronze sponsors, Five Star Rain Gutters. They were busy that day. And Planet Fitness Atascadero. So in special thanks, so many dance groups, arts groups, lighting groups, really were helpful in pulling this together, vendors from all over the place. I think we had over, gosh, a lot. I think the judges tasted 32 tamales or something like that, right? Something, quite something. And we were pleased to feature Friends of the Charles Paddock Zoo, the nonprofit that received benefit. All those dollars going towards our zoo and investing on a re-creation process. So May 2nd through 3rd of 2024 is the next Tamale Festival. So get it on your, May 25. I will make note of it on my notes. So then today was Bike to Work Day. Well, it's actually Bike to Work Week, but there we are this morning, biking to work. And if you can bike to work, that's great. We kicked off the week with Pedal to the Garden this morning, celebrating Bike to Work Day. So several of our staff rode their bike. I did. El Camino is not as flat as it looks, let me tell you. Almost five miles. It's not flat. Okay. So, but anyway, we had, our sponsors came in, Cyclery, The Nest, Wild Fields and Malibu Brew. Thank you to them. It was lots of fun. And get out and keep pedaling. We have a beautiful community. And if you can do that, you should do it from time to time. For more information, you can visit rideshare.org. We've had a few questions about mosquitoes and what happens and who takes care of mosquitoes. In, in our county, we don't have a vector control. So I did want to share, the voters were asked that question many years ago, and we did not assess ourselves for mosquito control. So with warmer weather upon us and the rain, it is prime time for those mosquitoes. So please, if you're concerned, look for standing water around your property. You'd be surprised, sitting in rain gutters, it's sitting in flower pots, watering cans. Remove those sources, your birdbath, a fountain not turned on. These are all things that can be great mosquito hatcheries and pleasant. Using mosquito dung scenarios with standing water. If you have water that you don't want to empty out, you can get those at nursery and hardware supply stores. And stay indoors around peak times, which is usually dusk and dawn, and make sure you use an appropriate repellent that's deemed safe by your judgment, and wear long sleeves and pants. Keep your windows and doors closed, if you can, from keeping those mosquitoes from getting into your home. Slow County does have resources for better mosquito management at slowcounty.ca.gov/pests. Some people may wonder what's happening on trafficway. There's a lot of work going on over there, and the lift station 13 and the Forest Main Replacement Project is underway. So this includes replacement of lift station 13 on El Camino near San Ramon. That's a very, a large lift station and two miles of Forest Main along a new real alignment on Santa Cruz Road and trafficway. So that's what's going on out there. This work's going to go for a little while. We appreciate people's patience. It's important to make these investments to make sure our wastewater system operates well. We all have an interest in that. If you have more information you're interested in, atascadero.org-project/liftstation13. I'm very excited to share with the council, one of your large goals is the El Camino Real Downtown Infrastructure Enhancement Project, which really focuses on safety and parking and free parking, by the way. And this, this, this project will be
Free parking?
Free, free parking in Atascadero. And so this project will add a number of parking spaces, landscape, street furniture, trees, beautiful lighting, that will really join our downtown with traffic one way in each direction, additional parking and making it much more pedestrian and bike friendly. So this is a project we've been looking forward to. We opened bids on May 9th, and Susac Construction received the apparent low bid. And that base bid with adults is very close to our budget. So I will be recommending you move forward with the project. So I'm thrilled for that. I will have, ask you to award the contract on May 28th. That's going to come really quick. And then even quicker, because Susac Construction is mobilized. They've been doing our work on Via Bridge and Lana, Lana Bridge and, or San Lucia Bridge, pardon me, and our paving projects. So they're, they were very aggressive in their bid. They can start construction very early June, which is great. So our goal is the school gets out, we can take advantage of all that time, start construction. The heavy part of the construction, we anticipate being done by the end of 2024. So that's good. And we'll, we'll try and work very hard to mitigate any disruption. I'll have more to say about this at the next council meeting as we have communications plans and mitigation plans. But exciting to share that I believe you have a project there. So that's great. And then a few other events coming up. We have Armed Forces Day at the zoo, Saturday, May 18th, from 10 to 5. And so this is celebrated annually on the third Saturday of May. So we want to honor our armed forces. And we, the week begins on the second Saturday of May, ending on the third Sunday of May. And so we want to make sure all active duty armed forces, men, women and intermediate families will come to the zoo. It's free. We thank you for your service. Bring your ID and we hope you will enjoy our Central Coast Zoo. And this is a great way for us to say thank you for your service. World Turtle Day. I know you don't want to miss this. This is May 23rd from 10 to 5. Learn more about turtles and what they do for our ecosystem. We'll have zookeeper talks and activities based around turtles for all ages from 10 to 5, and this is included with admission. That's what I have to share. Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any questions of the city manager?
A comment that we also, thanks to all of those who entered the dog contest, the dog costume contest at Tamale Festival. That was a real hoot, and the creativity of the community gets better every year.
All right. We'll now move on to community forum. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for persons who are wishing to address the council and on an item that is not on the agenda this evening, but over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and we allot a total of up to 30 minutes for community forum. When you come forward, we ask that you state your name for the record. And any items brought up during public comment cannot become a topic of discussion this evening. If I need to triage things and help get answers, I can do that, but we don't talk about any of the items brought up. So with that, and I will actually first, I know we've given you an apology on the back end, but we were supposed to have put a presentation together for SlowCog. Mr. Denuzio is here. And so I know you're doing the community forum three minutes, and I appreciate that. And again, our apologies for, for missing that on the agenda.
Not at all. Yep. And good evening, Mayor Moreno and City Council. I'm John Denunzio, SlowCog staff. I'm here to provide information on the regional road safety action plan and to ask for your involvement. There may be a slide.
Is there a slide, Luke, for that?
Okay. Well, with that, you know, every year around 30 people lose their lives in the crash on our, on our region. And 140 people suffer serious life-changing injuries. Road safety is a, next slide, please, is a local, regional, state and national issue with an increasing loss of lives on our roadways, which is not acceptable. Our goal is to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes in our roadways by 2015. There are around 4,000 crashes on our roads within the San Luis Obispo region between 2018 and 2022 that resulted in injury. And of those, 17% resulted in a fatal or a severe life-changing injury. In Atascadero, there were 320 crashes with 39 fatal or severe injuries during the same timeframe, representing 6% of our region's fatal and severe crashes. Next slide. To meet this challenge, a regional road safety steering committee was formed last October. Members include the County Emergency Medical Service Agency, Public Health, Public Works, CHP, Cal Fire, Cal Trans, Bike Slow County. To make a difference, we must tackle road safety from all angles, including education, enforcement, emergency response, engineering and more. And this group is providing SlowCog valuable insights and are helping us steer the regional road safety action plan. Excellent. Just here's a snapshot of this federally funded action plan. The big component of this effort is to use this as an opportunity to increase awareness in our communities about road safety and to hear from you. Excellent. Over the summer, we are attending in-person events around the region and are looking for additional public safety-focused events to join. So let us know if there are any opportunities in Atascadero that come to mind. We'd also like the city to amplify the outreach on social media channels. Please direct people to the SlowCogroad20.org website. The site is designed to collect information through an online interactive map and regional road user safety survey. The survey only takes five minutes to complete and will remain open to October. And please encourage people you know and love to provide information. Next slide. In October, we will reconvene a regional safety forum for local leaders to share best practices and information. This year's training will focus on the regional road safety action plan. Next slide. And this coming November 17th is the World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims. It is being jointly hosted by CHP and the County DA's office. This event is open to the public and will be held in the front lawn of the Slow County Courthouse, remembering all people killed and seriously injured on the road. So if you or a family member know of someone who has been a road traffic victim, please tell them about this event and please visit SlowCogroad20.org for more information.
Thank you, Mr. Denunzio.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers for community forum, please come forward. And if you're planning to speak, I would get up and stand in line so we can move through.
Good evening, Council. Jeff Hoslin, business owner of Glenn's Repair. And I know I've spoken a lot about waste management and also IWMA, et cetera. The reason it's so important for Glenn's, believe it or not, is in 2017, we were the first to get a Platinum Environmental Award at Glenn's for what we do in terms of recycling, proving that we recycle our oil properly, water conservation, et cetera. Out of the motorcycle division, the boating division, power equipment, we were the first Platinum Award in the nation. We were the third Platinum Award nationwide, if you count the Acura dealerships and the Honda dealerships. So I'm pleased to tell you tonight that we just once again got the award for 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wendy Lewis with El Camino Homeless Organization. I'm here tonight to give a couple of updates, but most importantly, talk about a recent success story that was happened through the support of Echo. We posted this on our social media about two weeks ago on Sunday. Every Sunday, we post a success. And this was a local gentleman. When we posted it with his permission, the response was overwhelming. So many people from the community knew him, but didn't know his story. You would have known him from local restaurants. Him and his wife were in the food industry. And unfortunately, she passed many years ago. And that, along with his house burning down, kind of sent his life into a spiral. He was unhoused for many, many years, and then he found Echo. And he recently, with our support, being part of our 90-day program, was able to get back into permanent housing. And I wanted to share a quote from him, because we asked, he still comes back to Echo for dinner several times a week, and his case manager still supports him. Once people are housed, we're still there for them because things come up, right? And we want to keep them housed. And so when we asked Renee why he comes back to dinner, he said, "Can you think of somewhere that you feel secure and safe? That's here for me. That's why I keep coming back. I don't feel any judgment here anymore." So that's kind of Echo in a nutshell. And we're here for many of people like Renee, people in encampments, people that are in our streets, right? That's what Echo does to support. So just would share appreciation for the community's support, the council's support, and just the community always stepping up for us. I also want to share a quick story of a recent almost severe incident at Echo. We had someone come to us who was in crisis, and this happens often. But he came to Echo because of our partnership with the city and our team and the CAT team. He was looking for his safety and where he could find it. He was asking for our case manager. He was asking for the officers from that, our team and that CAT team. And that is just an incredible progress we've made because of the support from the city, this new partnership. And I just want to thank the chief and his team. It was just really heartwarming to see. And then I also just want to encourage the community to come out and learn, find out more about Echo, because we are very efficient with the community's dollars. We are very effective. And we rely on about half of what we do from our community and our constituents. So I want to thank this council, thank the city for the ongoing support. We had a recent visit from our city manager who came out with the Kiwanis to serve dinner, and I think got to see firsthand kind of what Echo truly is. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Next speaker.
Hi. My name is Tom Bolton. We're here in Atascadero. And I'm really bummed because I left my glasses at home. So it's going to be really difficult for me. But I'm glad I have a clock. So this is awesome. This is great. Thank you. Okay. This is regarding motorcycle dirt bike riding in the Salinas Riverbed. I've been living in this county since 1963. I've lived here in Atascadero for over 25 years. And I've been riding in that riverbed since the 70s. A lot of us have. Riding dirt bikes and motocrosses is the thing that really kept me out of trouble as a teen. Kept me, when all the other kids were in the riverbed partying and having keg parties, remember keg parties? And smoking all kinds of things. I was riding, racing, practicing and dumping all my money into dirt bikes and racing. So it kept me out of trouble as a teen. So the reason I'm here, the reason I'm here is something happened recently on social media that made me very angry. Our police department, well, they decided to put out a community notice, complete with exclamation marks. And I'm just going to read a few bits of it here, most of it. Attention Atascadero residents, we need your help to address a growing concern, illegal motorcycle riding in the Salinas Riverbed. This reckless behavior not only violates local laws, but also endangers public safety and harms our precious environment. Safety hazard, riding motorcycles in the riverbed is extremely dangerous and can lead to serious accidents and injuries. The, completely with more exclamation, the entire delicate ecosystem of the Salinas Riverbed is at risk due to all the soil erosion, damage to vegetation, blah, 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 blah. Loud noise from motorcycle engines disrupts the peace and tranquility of our community, impacting quality of our life and wildlife alike. We urge all residents to report any instances of motorcycle riding in the riverbed immediately. Now, I understand the noise issue. We all get that. We understand the noise issue. And I, I know you're, you're new here, and we're going to give you some slack, okay? But to suddenly make these kids riding in the riverbed on dirt bikes criminals, dangerous individuals threatening our community and chaos, pandemonium, hide your pets and children, this is way overboard. Way overboard. Now, there's some things recently that have happened where people that have, that live near the riverbed have had some altercations with the kids on dirt bikes. And I get it. Okay. Things are getting out of hand. And folks, parents, you need to control your kids. But the bottom line is the kids need places to ride. Don't say Pismo, don't say Pozo. Those places are almost an hour drive. $50 for Pismo. And if you need a green sticker, another $52. I realize I'm running out of time. But the bottom line is the kids need somewhere to go to keep them out of trouble. They need things to do. They have ball fields. They have tennis courts, all free. They have no place to ride.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Welcome, next speaker.
My name is Gary Lehrer. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm not happy to be here at all. I don't even like what I'm going to have to say, but I have to call, I have to call it out. There's a great level of toxicity going on in this city right now, incredible amount of toxicity. I don't know if any of you know what it's like to be confronted by an angry mob and having to be escorted out of an event at Cal Poly by police in full riot gear. But I have. I know what it's like. I know what it's like to go to an event at Cal Poly and be harangued and yelled at and belittled. And I experienced the same thing right here in Atascadero at Martin Pollan Library. This was horrific. I, they were talking about, this is a presentation on Christian nationalism. And one of the reasons I went is because I don't know anything about this. I'm a right-wing Republican Christian evangelical. I don't know anything about this. This is anything that comes up at headquarters. I know all the Republicans. I know the major Republicans in, in the county. We're not, we're not even remotely connected to Christian nationalism. I personally wrote the endorsement email for, for Trump in this county. There wasn't any reference to Christian, Christian nationality was based on what I felt and what the rest of the central committee agreed was his pluses and his performance. To come to a meeting like this, this was in a violation. I was at the meetings that the supervisors had regarding the hate speech resolution. And Debbie Arnold, at the end of this, said, this, I'm sorry, I'm shaken, but this is really a sad thing to have to address. Debbie Arnold said, this is a condemnation of hate speech, left, right or center. This is not any one particular group. And nobody else on the dais disputed what Debbie Arnold had to say. And for them to meet there and violate the, I'm sorry, but he violated his creed, the, the code of ethics at UCLA where he graduated. And we were supposed to deal honestly and earnestly. There was nothing but propaganda in there. I know politics and history. My degree's in political science. I studied political science, one of the top schools in the whole country. And I took probably more history classes. This was not historical methodology. And I can prove this. I've got photos. And, you know, we are not idol worshippers. We do not promote a false gospel. We are sincere, dedicated Christians. And I thought one of the most egregious things is that they, by guilt, by association, even attempted to defame the mayor. I'm not going to stand for that. I know the mayor personally. And she's done an excellent job. She, the core of her support is based on the work that she's done. And that's why she's successful. It has nothing to do with Christian nationalism or making promises or being part of any, any group. And we, the Women's Federation are not, they don't, do not call themselves the Trumpeters. That's the name of the newsletter. That's the name of the newsletter since the 1950s. I would ask you all to do what you can to ramp down the toxicity and make politics here civil. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehrer. Next speaker.
Thank you, council members and Heather Moreno. My name is Becky Hallett, and I live in Paso Robles. And I grew up in Atascadero and I graduated from Atascadero High School. And I too attended that lecture at the library on April 26th in which there was an attack on the Atascadero Republican Women Federated. A slide was shown with our newsletter. They were trying to pinpoint and actually tie the Atascadero Republican Women Federated to Christian nationalism, MAGA Trumpers and a very dangerous political movement behind a certain political campaign. The rhetoric and propaganda that was spewed at this meeting was very harmful and hateful and incited fear and division amongst the people there. There was a bit of a blow up and at the very The rhetoric and propaganda that was spewed at this meeting was very harmful and hateful and incited fear and division amongst the people there. There was a bit of a blow up. And at the very end, the speaker, the lecturer came after me directly, very antagonistically. And he was quite agitated because he had been exposed about what he called the Trumpeter. He said that the Republican women of Atascadero were so revered, so revered Donald Trump that we even named our newsletter, the Trumpeter, which was so false. This, this type of rhetoric should not be spewed out in our community. I'm thinking in Atascadero of all places to bring up Christian nationalism, which smacks frankly of Nazi Germany and, and just rousing up the crowds. So I actually called him out and I did it very politely and told him and the people that were there that as Republican women and Republicans period, we did not revere any man on this earth as our savior or to save our country, that we had one Redeemer and that was Jesus Christ. And that's what we believed in. And they, nobody said anything, but he was so agitated that at the end, he actually pointed to me like this and said, what is your name? And I gave him my first name. He said, I want your last name. And I said, well, I'm not going to give it to you because he was very threatening at that point. And, and he stirred the crowd up by saying, she recorded this whole lecture. And the crowd got a little angry.
Thank you, Ms. Hallett. Welcome, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Vicki Miller and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to share a little bit more about the same meeting at the library, at our public library, paid for by us taxpayers. Becky had mentioned the Trumpeter. Once that was pointed out, he had a picture of the, and he being Susan Funk's husband. He showed a picture of the Trumpeter and used that to, to just further his false claim that we worship Trump. And that was after he showed a golden face of Trump and that's who we bowed down to. And once his error was pointed out, he never once said, oh, I apologize. I need to double check my facts, anything. He just went on. The truth kind of fell to the ground. Also, he had several slides and he showed a picture of the Republican National Headquarters, or our headquarters. And he said, in a very mocking and condescending tone, actually, they're over there right now watching a movie about, you know, they actually believe that the election, the 2020 election was stolen. Mocking us, and I suggest that you might want to watch that movie and see how the facts have been documented. And that's another story. But the fact is everybody's entitled to their, their opinion, whether you agree with it or not. And whatever your opinion is, you don't deserve to be mocked. And as being a person of some type of leadership by marriage, if nothing else, you should be a little bit more responsible, in my humble opinion. Also, I kind of take, I don't really understand what Christian nationalism is. I'm a Christian. I make no apology for it. This nation was founded, most would say, on Christian principles, although you're, you're free to worship any God that you want. But so being a Christian, that's not a bad thing to me. And nationalism, if I could just read a definition of that, it says nationalism is an ideology that emphasizes loyalty, devotion or allegiance to a nation or nation state and holds that such obligations outweigh other individual or group interest. So you know what? You can call me a Christian nationalist if that's what that means. Guilty and proud of it. But at any rate, I really do think we need to be careful at how, how speakers can inflame an audience. And it was just very upsetting to us. And we were asked to leave several times for voicing our opinion, even though it was at a public forum. And I, one more thing, I just wonder Becky was very, very threatened by Susan Funk's husband at the very end. She felt very frightened by that. I just wonder if he would have been so bold if she would have been a 13 year old boy.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next speaker. And just so you know, we have 10 total minutes left on community forums. So if, just want to give you that information. Yes.
My name is Scott Stanton. And thank you for keep having me here to the city council. I'm a proud Atascadero homeowner and resident for almost eight years now. I'm a therapist in mental health at a level three and four prison, state prison here in the next county. And I'm a combat veteran. I came here to speak today after I heard that the Democratic Club hosted a speaker, Gordon Fugley, at the public library to speak about Christian nationalism. And I assume he was lecturing about the bridge incident where racists showed up at the bridge with these bed sheets with Nazi paraphernalia and just hateful stuff. These racists were from Hanford, California, in the valley, not even from our county. We have all condemned those, those racists. I believe everybody should because anti-Semitism has no place in Atascadero. Just as anti-Semitism has no place in our city, anti-Christian rhetoric has no place in Atascadero either. Like I said, I'm a combat veteran. I served on the battleship USS Missouri in the First Gulf War. It's hard enough carrying around my combat experience and battle fatigue in my soul just to come home and try to find normalcy. And I found it here in this wonderful little gem of San Luis Obispo. Seems like it's the last normal place on the coast. But to be called a Christian nationalist, which I really don't know what that is, maybe because I'm Republican, because I'm a veteran, because I'm a Christian, because I love the wave, the stars and stripes around that. I love our flag that I fought for and, and we enjoy our freedom underneath that flag. It's absurd to me to have those, this broad stroke of a label as a Christian nationalist, whatever that is. I condemn the thesis that Mr. Fugley was trying to defend in our public library. I admonish any city council members, school board members or anybody that works for the city that attended this facilitation of hate at our public library. Because this meeting at the public library is no different than those racist Nazis that were on the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Next speaker.
Good evening. I don't have anything prepared, so I'm relying on the Holy Spirit to tell me what to say. I'm here representing the Christians in this community that couldn't make it tonight.
If you could give us your name, please.
Oh, sorry, Maria Smith.
Thank you, Maria.
You're welcome. There's voices out there that remain in their homes, go to work every day, go to church, raise their children in this community, are nothing but law abiding citizens here. And for someone in this community that is the chair of the Democratic Party to go against, outwardly go against a full people group in this community that has done nothing but be uplifting to this community, be law abiding citizens, is absolutely unconstitutional. Unconstitutional. And I would strongly encourage that this city council do what the Board of Supervisors did, and that's pass a resolution. In fact, this council passed a resolution in support of Pride Month, a whole month. Would love to see a resolution passed in support of the godly people in this community that do nothing but keep their heads down, raise their children, go to work. They're not out there on the bridges causing chaos, which I believe is completely, completely planned. We know that there's a, there's just a plan across this nation to make anybody who, who calls Jesus Christ their Lord and Savior out to be an enemy of the state. Give me a break. Give me a break. It's an outright lie. It's gaslighting. And I encourage this council to put a stop to it in this community. In this community. It's absolutely, absolutely uncalled for. Anyways, Jesus also commands us to pray for those who persecute you. Now, we've not been physically harmed, but there certainly could come to that with what happened at that library. When you rile up a community against a people group, that people group could be in fear, similar to our Jewish brothers. You know, that are, there's persecution on these campuses across these United States. It's uncalled for. So Jesus calls us to pray for those who persecute us. So I do pray that those who do not call Jesus as their Lord and Savior, that they would truly hear the truth. They would know that they are loved. Jesus loves them, died on the cross for them, just like he did me. And I would pray that someday their eyes would be open. They would be open to his love and his truth and, and follow him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Dan Hathaway. I didn't come here expecting to speak, but you know, I do believe in the Lord Jesus Christ and he is my hero. Donald Trump is just a man running for president. Anyway, enough of that. But what's, what's on my heart right now is you guys. You guys are elected by the people. You need to do, you need to follow the people's will. You're not there for you. Okay. You need to think and see the truth. You have a responsibility. And I think one of the big responsibilities is to show this leadership and to dismiss all of this hate that is out there. And, and it's there, it's there. And it comes from both ways. But with good leadership, maybe you could calm it down a little bit. And actually, I think we're kind of lucky because at Atascadero, we really haven't had any major blowups or anything that I know of. Everything seems to move pretty smoothly, which is great. And I thank you for that. But again, I, I just ask that you take, I pray that you take a leadership role and, you know, don't allow things like what happened at the library to occur. You know, because it just automatically blasting a whole group of people that don't deserve it. You know, I'm a, I'm a Christian Republican. I do a lot. I'm involved in a lot of different things. And, and it just, it breaks my heart to see things like that, see all the hate out there. So anyway, I ask you, please, take a good, strong leadership role. Don't just start calling people names. Don't let others call people names. And, and look for the facts, look for the truth. It's out there. Okay, anyway, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. We have about two minutes left. Is there anyone else in chambers that wish to speak? Not seeing anyone. If there's anyone on Zoom, we've got about two minutes left. If there's anyone on Zoom, you could raise your hand and speak at community forum. I'm not seeing any, so I'll go ahead and close community forum and bring it back to council and staff. So I think Mr. Denazio did a very nice job of getting that into a three and a half minute timeframe. So again, that was our, our bad there. Mr. Osland, congratulations on that award. Ms. Lewis, thank you for that success story. I know there are many, many others. With regards to Mr. Bolton and the, the dirt bikes, it's something that we have talked about, wanting to make sure that everybody can, can use it together safely and responsibly. And so I might ask you, if you and some of the other, you know, parents with kids that are riding bikes, if we could come together, we'd like to have that conversation because there are the large majority that are riding responsibly and safety, safely. And it's a small minority, we think, that are causing a lot of these problems. And so if we can all work together on that, I think it'll be good for everyone. So I'd ask staff to do that. With regards to the speakers who brought up the presentation that was at the library, the library is county property, county owned and county run. And so the city doesn't have any jurisdiction over whether something occurs at the Atascadero Library. So that, I think, comes as a surprise to a lot of people because it is the Atascadero Library. So with regards to, you know, whether hate speech or whatever that might be. And if you're thinking that it shouldn't happen there, then I would, I would go to the county and see what that policy is and how that resolution that they did affects that. So with that, I think we will move on to our public hearing. And our public hearing is item, no, we're not going to, we're not going to speak. I, I don't want to, I don't want to speak anymore to the items brought up under community forum.
I'm sorry, it wasn't clear on the question.
I was asking the opportunity as a council member, under the Brown Act, I have the opportunity to respond briefly to items that are brought up and come in public comment. And I would prefer that we don't do that. Yeah. It is. I would prefer that we don't do that.
Okay, I'll just point out that Brown Act does have a provision that allows council members to briefly respond to topics brought up. But ultimately, the running of the meeting is up to the presiding officer, subject to the, the will of the entire council to make sure that the presiding officer is conforming to the protocols of the meeting. So in other words, if the entire council felt that the mayor in presiding over the meeting was taking a stance and not doing something according to the council protocols, the council could correct that. But otherwise, the mayor is generally the one who will be running the meeting.
And I'm looking for two sentences. If it's literally two sentences, go. Yeah. Just to, just to note, as someone who also calls Jesus Christ my Lord and Savior, that the, that we are, we've made it through 12 years of having a council member who was married, had a spouse who wrote regularly in public sphere and frequently caused controversy and, and, and things. And we all managed, made it through that. And we can all manage to recognize that council members have spouses who themselves have, do research and have opinions and, and express, you know, express themselves in groups that may rent public spaces and will all make it through that. All right, moving on to our public hearing. This is a weed abatement hearing of objections. And I will ask first if we have any expertise. Just getting a letter count. That's the first time a lot of us got a letter, chief. I'll let you know that. I have two. So I think I will turn this over to, is this Chief Van Son or is this Chief Bryson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I will be turning it over to our Battalion Chief of Community Risk Reduction, Chief Van Son.
Thanks, Chief Bryson and Madam Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk about weed abatement and hearing of objections. And you could thank me for receiving your letter that you got this year. So first of all, the background of our weed abatement program, it's a critical component of our fuel management plan. With the weed abatement being one piece, we also have other pieces to our, our program, which is our chipping program, our backyard burning, our green, green waste program. And also we do a fuels management program with our fuels committee within the fire department. But then the citizens manage their own property. That's another component of that. And in order to have an efficient fuels management program, we need to have the citizens manage their property through weed abatement as the fire department does the, the larger fuels project. And doing those together, side by side, we can create a fire safe community. So by doing that weed abatement, it allows us a quicker or it slows the progress of the fire and allows us to get there on time before we get a bigger complication with our, our fuels out there. So here's a, oh, I gotta go back. I didn't finish all those other things. Oh, here's the number of private parcels cut in the past nine years. So starting in 2014, the city cut 38 parcels. And in 2023, we did 24. And just to, to, to touch base, the city's not in the, in the business of weed abatement. We're more in the business of fuel management. And that's our, our ultimate goal is not to cut the property, but to have the citizens cut it themselves. So here's our, our basic timeline on, on how we've progressed through this weed abatement process. So we start off in March. We inspected, we, meaning myself, inspected 11,282 parcels. And we had a lot of growth this year. As we all know, we had a lot of rain on the weekends and then sun during the, the week. And then the the week, and then more rain on the weekends, which made the grass grow taller and thicker this year. So as that parcel was inspected, you may have already cut the weeds, or you would have been cutting them as I drove by. But that doesn't mean that there's the potential of them coming back by June 1. And that's what our weed abatement ordinance says is either having the weeds or the potential to have the weeds. So the number of of letters may have gone up this year just because of the potential of having having the weeds. So the next process we had was in April, and that was the declaration of weeds as a nuisance. And this is, this is part of the process, the legal process allows the fire department to make inspections and eventually place an abatement fee on the county special levy tax. So that allows us declaring them a nuisance allows us to actually abate them if the citizen hadn't done that themselves. So then in April, 6,271 letters were mailed mailed out. And again, this is also part of the legal process. But the citizen does not receive one of those letters in the mail, the city can't legally cut it. So it's really, it's a, it's a first, a courtesy notice. It's not really stating that you're in violation. A courtesy notice just tells you that you have the potential to have your lot cut if your weeds are not done by June 1. And then now we're here, we are in May. So this is the process of objections, a proposed removal of growth, vegetated growth. So if any citizen has an objective of their property that they received the letter, this is the time that they could do that. And then in June, starting June 1, the visual re inspections began of the 6,271 parcels. And this is a more close detailed inspection of the parcel. Again, there might be regrowth if you had already cut it. At this point, we also will make make contact, try to make contact with the property owner. We'll knock on the door, explain to them what needs to be done, what's out of out of regulation. And if nobody is home, we actually leave a door hanger on on their door that explains it specifically what area needs to be cut. So our recommendation is the city council hear all objections to the proposed removal of vegetated growth and or refuse and allow, overrule any objections and authorize the fire chief to proceed and perform the work of abatement. So I'd like to thank the the community for their ongoing support. We have a potential for another busy fire season. We are all in this together to keep our community safe. We are always here and happy to provide consultations if you need it. But by the citizens doing their part of managing their own properties and the city doing our part of managing other properties, we'll all get through this together. So I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Chief Van Sson. That's the idea of defend a Tascadero, right? Yeah. So we've been doing this for quite a number of years. And we thank the public very much that you by and large do abate your weeds. And we actually don't have a lot of, you know, local fires that then get out of control here. So we really do a great job of managing, and you all are a part of that. So I will open up to public comment in just one moment. I will start by asking council if there's any questions before going to public.
I'm just curious, as Mayor noted, we've been through this process many times. But I guess I want to understand when we say this would be the time for objections. So there's no, you know, no citations have been issued. And so this, somebody could actually come and say, I don't think I should get this letter because I have, you know, for whatever reason, because they're not in violation at the moment. What would be the nature of an objection that somebody would make? And they would need to make it here tonight, correct?
Basically, that's that's correct. They feel like they've received a letter that they weren't due, and they're objecting to receiving that letter that says that they potentially may have weeds June 1. They would be objecting to that process.
Right. Because I understand some people are like, hey, I just mowed my weeds. I shouldn't have got this letter. But realizing, no, but you need to be in compliance on June 1, you know, not April 15 or something. So, okay, thank you.
And I think we talked last, back in April, when we saw this, and we have a number, a much greater number of notifications went out this time. So there are a lot of us, like some of us on this dais, they're getting this letter for the first time. We're not surprised by it because we know about it, but we hadn't gotten it before. So is that simply a result of the rainy season? I think there was also a piece of it had to do with the ability of new software that we have maybe to recognize more of those parcels? Can you give us a sense of of why there's such a greater number?
Yeah, I think personally, looking into the actual ordinance of the potential of having weeds was a big driver of it this year, even though people were cutting their weeds as I was driving by, they still had potential of having weeds in June 1. And this gives us the opportunity, we've had several complaints in the past of people, their property was out of compliance after the June 1. And going back, looking at the software, they didn't receive the first letter. So there was nothing that we were able to do about it, except go through the code enforcement section of it. We can legally cut cut their weeds for them. So this, by by giving everyone that can actually take a weed eater at some point to their property to receive a note, a notice that you have to be in compliance gives us more, I would say, more teeth to enforce it when it comes to June 1.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you. So with that, I will go ahead and open up to public comments. So I think there's a couple of individuals, if you could come over here to the lectern, and if you would state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes. And then we will close public comment after that. And then we will address any issues brought up. Welcome.
My name is Ray Wilson. Been a resident here.
I'm not sure, is that mic on?
It shows that it is.
If you could maybe get a little closer to it, or?
My name is Ray Wilson. Is that better?
Little better.
Yeah. And I've been a resident of Tascadero here, our beautiful community since 1979. And I received weed abatement notification here for the first time ever. And my question is, how was this data garnered? How was it collected? And I did call down, somebody said it was via dash cam. I'm like, okay, I didn't know if that was true or not. And I noticed your numbers up there on the amount of parcels that were notified this year. And I realized we've had a lot of rain. I was just curious, and does this only apply to weeds? Property is landscaped? Doesn't it, it does not have anything to do with vegetation that is close to your house that's considered a shrub or a bush? Those were my questions.
We'll answer all questions once I close public comment. Could you ask that first one again and into the mic? I'm not, I'm not hearing you clearly.
I was just curious how the data was collected.
How the data was collected. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I got your two questions. Thank you very much, sir. Yeah. Yes, one moment. Staff, do we need addresses from individuals to answer any questions? No, we're good. All right. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say.
Your name for the record, please.
1979, my wife and I had our wedding anniversary reception up here in the rotunda.
Could you give us your name? Could you give us your name for the record?
Oh, Chuck Kemp, KDP. I'm a neighbor with Ray there. And we've lived in our house for 20, going on 29 years. And this is my first letter I've received. And I kind of had a question like Ray did, how they obtained the information. I talked to Kelly with the fire department. And she said, she told me visually, he did something with an iPad or something. Anyhow, my thought is, any one day out of the year, I can't see where you could complain about any weeds in my yard at all. I mean, our lawn, our front, our back is completely landscaped. So I was kind of curious how he came, they come up with the information to send me my first letter also. And my wife and I, and like Ray and his family, we take pride in our landscaping. We're not in a high weed area or anything like that. So I invite them to come by and take a look, look at our backyard. Our backyard is probably as maintained as your lawn out here, out here. And again, we take a lot of pride in it. We want to go along with the fire department. We respect the need of it. And that's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, next speaker.
Good evening, Council. Excuse me, Jeff Osland, resident here in the city. I've sat through a lot of these fire letter meetings and whatnot over the last probably 12 years or so. The one thing that I do want to say is, I think we have to look at it a little differently than just regulation. It may be put a positive spin on this. In this day and age where insurance companies are dropping your rental properties or your residents from being able to have fire insurance, or the price is going up double, I think the city should be commended for trying to get weed abatement taken care of. I just wish there was another way that we could sell it to the city in a more positive light that this makes a big difference for your neighbors, along with your community, less stress on our emergency personnel, et cetera. I can tell you that I got one of those letters this year from our insurance company that they were going to drop me, which is ridiculous because it said we were under extensive renovation, and I do have construction insurance as well. And it's because I don't have a fence. So everything kind of gets into play. But the one thing that in this process that we did learn was, as long as your, from my insurance company anyways, umbrella of your trees are 12 feet away from your structure, then everything is permissible for me. So I think if there's a way that we can get our community back in a positive light of saying, here's what you need to do, because we don't want you to lose your insurance, maybe another avenue in a PR move to make this positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. Any other members here in chambers wishing to speak on this item? I'm not seeing any. I will look to Zoom. Are there any members in Zoom wishing to speak on this item? You can go ahead and raise your hand. I am not seeing any. So I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council and to staff. It does not include landscaped area. It is weed specific. But I will actually ask Battalion Chief Van Sson to answer those questions in terms of how the data was collected and, you know, the landscaping versus weeds. And, you know, if you've got this perfectly manicured area, do you say that, well, the size of it, there's the potential for weeds? And so we need to notice it just in case? Or how does all of that work?
Sure. So I'll touch base first on how the data is collected. So I personally go and drive all and do a, it's more like a windshield, it's a drive by. So I don't get out of the vehicle, and I don't check the whole property on this first initial inspection. It's just a drive by visual. Sometimes I'm working off an iPad and I click the parcel. So sometimes I might accidentally click an extra parcel that's near an area that has a potential. And again, it is only the annual grasses that we're looking at at that time. And just to touch base a little bit, it is a legal process that we have to do that initial inspection in order to follow up with the weed abatement on the on the second inspection. So it is a legal procedure on the second inspection. It's a more detailed visual inspection of those 6,000 parcels. You actually, you go, you'll, I'll drive by, but then if there's potential in the backyard, you get out of the vehicle and look around too. So the initial one is a more, a quicker evaluation, I would say. And then the second one's the more detailed.
So you might see a property that's a, that has the potential for it, but you're not seeing the specific landscaping on that first glance and know that there's not a single weed that's going to pop up because you really can't tell that. But if you had to go back a second time, you'd be like, oh, clearly no weeds, we're fine.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. And with regards to Mr. Osland's comment, I thought that same thing, but I assume that there's a legal, because it comes across as very like weeds are noxious and you better get this, you know, and it does come across as a little bit firm versus, hey, this is for your good, for your neighbor's good. It almost seems that there could be a little more of a PR, you know, attitude to it. I don't know if that's possible. And I certainly, we don't need to wordsmith anything tonight. But if that is possible in the future, that might be nice. And certainly, we can't promise you're not going to lose your homeowner's insurance. But just that we are protecting, we're defending a Tascadero, we're protecting our neighbors and ourselves. So if it's possible, that might be kind of nice. All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Borbo and, oh, Councilmember Dara is followed by Borbo.
Thanks. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned this is specifically weed abatement. So if somebody had multiple water, multiple piles of brush, maybe from tree limbs that have come down or whatever, is that something that is wanting to be removed? Are they going to be requested to be removed? Or is it okay to add that if it's orderly? And what's orderly?
So yeah, follow up on that. The weed abatement process is for the annual grasses. We do find in this inspection piles of brush at times, trees down. And that's more of a, it can't be handled through the same contractor, weed abatement contract. But we will go and work with the property owner. We may stop that second drive by, talk to them and see if there's some way we can get that cleaned up. We have had to go through the code enforcement process at times when we found things that we deem a fire hazard. But in most cases, we'd be working with the property owner and talking to them, see how we can get that cleared up.
Okay. And then one more question. If somebody was receiving a notice that that the fire department has scheduled somebody to come out to take care of the weeds because they haven't done it, and then they quickly do it themselves, do they need to contact the city or the fire department to say that they've already done it? Or is just doing it good enough? I know, it's kind of a shame to have you guys go out there and go, it's already been done, or the contractor. But are they required to call to say that they've already taken care of it?
No, they're not required to notice us. We're not going to have any anything cut that's already been cut. We applaud them for getting it done, even if it happens, you know, when they get it done, they may be on a list to be cut, and our contractor shows up and it's already done. And that's absolutely just fine. We're just happy it gets cleaned up.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm curious and concerned about the workload on you. I mean, we're talking 11,000 plus parcels. If you think about the concept of looking at each of those individually, I think the public realize that's a monumental task. And I'm assuming we have these double digit numbers, you know, in the 20s, and sometimes the 30s, but sometimes the teens, which means an extremely small fraction. When you do have to abate, I assume we have pictures showing very clearly that, you know, this parcel really needed to have its weeds abated, and the people hadn't done it. And it's already June 15 or June 20 or whatever. We have that ability to show that when we actually end up having a contractor do it.
Yeah, that's correct. Our contractor, he'll take a picture with the date and the placard of of the parcel prior to the weed abatement, and then one after the weed abatement. So there is a record of it.
And concerned about the workload on you. You mentioned you really having to do this visually. And I picture like, I'm on the west side with three acres, but I have a flag lot. Sometimes the gate is shut. You can't see, but I mean, I think you can safely assume that my three acres has a lot of weeds on it, at least in portions. It's not three acres of landscape. And I'm wondering, I mean, using, you know, the technology we have nowadays, you can't just like, kind of scroll over a satellite view with, you know, of a parcel and go, that place is clearly going to need to, you know, do their weeds by June 1.
No, yeah, so exactly right. Like, the flag lot specifically, it would be impossible for me to drive every single flag lot, to check every single property visually on the first one. But on the second one, if I do, if they had received a notice and they're in that flag lot, I will drive that flag lot to ensure that that it's done.
Right. And in some cases, you can see it better from a neighboring lot.
Absolutely.
Because I mean, I always get the notice as I should. And I don't think I've ever gotten a second notice. One year, my tractor broke. I had to get a new one. Didn't come till June 1.
Yeah, I did. I'd ask about that also, given that that the criteria Yeah, I did, I'd ask about that also, given that, that the criterion is shifted to being the potential for developing weeds. Does it make sense to re-survey every property every year? Shouldn't we just, if, if a property has once identified that it is, has potential for developing weeds, shouldn't we preemptively give a notice and then maybe have to go back if they have done, if they've paved the whole thing over or something and not ask, not file the permit for that? Then we would need to recognize that.
So I'd love to jump in on that. We have done a lot of research into this because of the amount of time that it takes. And based on the codes that we use in order to do this, the steps that Chief Onson takes are those that are required by the law. So he does have to go out and do both the initial inspection of all of the properties and then go back out and do the second inspection of all of those properties that received the notice. That is why our notices changed over the years to now include the potential because it is that snapshot in time, that day that he happens to drive by. At that day, there may not be weeds, but come June 1st, there is the potential for those weeds. And then if we haven't given that notice, we cannot abate. And then we have to go through the code enforcement process, which like Mr. Osselin noted and the council noted, then is a much longer process, much harder process. And then is the potential for fire hazard to the community.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I pulled a lot of weeds out of my landscaping this year. We all did.
Well, you know, we're all in favor of any way we can be more efficient and economize our time on that because it's a big process. All right. Thank you very much. And thank you to Kelly for answering the public's questions apparently in exactly the right way. So not surprising. All right. Any other questions, comments, or can I get a motion?
I move that we authorize the fire chief to proceed and perform the work of weed abatement as outlined in the staff report.
Oh, second.
Motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Funk. We'll call please.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Derris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nysom?
Yes.
And Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our management report, community cleanliness. And I'm going to turn this over to our police chief, Suddles.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. And thank you for the opportunity to discuss a topic I think is very important, which is community cleanliness. I think that community cleanliness is probably one of the goals that we have that is directly tied to our overall goals of, you know, creating an environment within our city that is warm and inviting. I think when you have a clean community, you have a nice place to visit. So thank you for the opportunity. The things that I wanted to cover today in the verbal portion of this report will be the existing municipal code that we have for graffiti abatement and some suggestions that we may have. Thank you. Some suggestions that we may have for some additional language or enhancements to that ordinance to give us some more tools to better address the issues of graffiti abatement. Number two, I wanted to bring forward the opportunity to discuss the potential introduction of an ordinance for shopping carts that can help with that issue. And then third, we'll discuss the request that we have to increase the budget for campsite debris removal as well as request to actually move that budget from where it is now to the police department. So I'll jump right into the first topic. See if I can, there we go. Right here, the first topic we'll talk about is graffiti abatement. And I think with graffiti abatement, it's important to remember there's really two types of places that you're going to find your graffiti, that's on private property and on public property. And there are some language that we would suggest that we could add to the existing ordinance that can clearly outline what it is that could help to incentivize abatement efforts on private property and what we can do to help alleviate staff efforts on private property. So when it comes to some suggestions that we have regarding private property and ways to incentivize the abatement, one, we could simply seek to continue voluntary compliance. Another option is we could incentivize people with a graffiti reward program, which would identify, when we do identify individuals that are potential suspects and offer award for their identification and conviction. Another option is a condition issuance of encroachment permits to include deterrence or abatement conditions. Third is a condition projects with discretionary approval to include deterrence or abatement conditions. And then lastly, to utilize code enforcement process. As I mentioned, there is also the issue of graffiti on private property and the fact that it takes staff time. And when we have graffiti that comes up, it's not something that's planned. It's usually a criminal event that we have to adjust our schedules for and then put resources toward. So we either have to reschedule and push off other events that we're trying to accomplish or allow that graffiti to stay there. And one of our goals is to have graffiti removed promptly. So some language that could be included to help with that is abatement through negotiated contracts with one or more painting contractors. Abatement through a volunteer program, which might not be ideal because then we might not be able to promptly remove things because we're relying on the schedules of our volunteers. Abatement with limitations on the use of city funds. Or abatement utilizing city employees and city funds with or without limitations. Moving on to the next section of the graffiti portion is cost recovery. And the cost recovery that I'm going to discuss is the ordinance right now covers how we go about recovering costs from private property owners. And the only thing that's in the ordinance right now is assessments on properties. There are some other options that we have that we can consider. But if we do decide that property assessments are the way to go, there are some enhancements that we can do to the ordinance to better address that or to communicate some, some language such as to include the costs, that cost will equal actual cost of removal plus an admin fee to recover allocated staff time. Additionally, language that would explain that an escalator could be added for repeat occurrences. I mentioned that there are alternatives to just having property assessments as a way of recovering costs through the government code, government code 38773. There are different options that are available as well to include the, not only the assessment of properties, but also the putting a lien on a private property. Under that same government code, under different subsections, there's also the ability, if you are to identify a suspect and someone were convicted, you could go after the property of the responsible party. You could put a lien or an assessment on that property. If that individual was a juvenile, this government code also gives you the opportunity to apply a lien or an assessment to the parent's private property. So that is another option that's available. And third, on the other options is there is the option of instituting or collections proceedings, which is something that is in place now, just is not in the current ordinance. So it's something that could be added for that. Moving on to the next topic is our unauthorized removal of shopping carts.
Could we take these one at a time? Like I think let's, let's kind of pause on this one and give some feedback and then we'll move on to the next. Is that okay with you, chief?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So could you tell us, what is the current? So when, just broadly, when graffiti is on public property, we take care of that in as timely of a manner as we're able to and the taxpayers bear the cost of that currently. If we can find the criminals, we do that and we prosecute them accordingly, I would assume.
That's absolutely correct, mayor. And so when we have graffiti on public property, we currently will get a hold of our public works department. We'll ask them and essentially like I was alluding to, they have to now rearrange their schedules to do it. And that's where the staff time really comes into it. If we do identify somebody that is a suspect and we get a conviction, we can always request through the courts to have them pay for it through the court order. But a lot of times, people don't have the means to do that. So sometimes that doesn't, is not an option. But, but we do, if we find somebody, we do include time spent within our report and ask the DAs.
Is it currently set up so that if it is a minor, that the parents could then be? Is that currently set up in the code or no?
That, it's not set up in the code, no. But it is something that is worked out through the district attorney's office if we have somebody convicted. So they know with the juveniles, they can assign that to the, to the parent.
So currently, if then graffiti is on private property, again, what is the process currently?
So currently, within the ordinance, we do have the authority and it's not clearly outlined. But if you read it, it does imply that we have the authority to send staff onto private property to abate through graffiti.
It does or does not?
We do. It does. It does. We do have that right. But it doesn't clearly outline that. I think that the language could be clarified. And that's partially the reason why we're bringing forward this request.
The larger issue, mayor, if I may, is we have the right to correct the situation. But it's very hazy on the enforcement is either a misdemeanor or municipal code. It's kind of heavy. There isn't a real outlined cost recovery process.
No, I understand that. I'm thinking about, you know, there was a downtown bank that had some graffiti for quite some time. And I don't know if it was that we didn't have the ability to do that, we didn't have the legal right to do that, so we didn't abate it. Or I wasn't sure how that's, and is it just that it's unclear? And so we're kind of cautious in terms of doing something like that?
That's correct, mayor. And then also in some of the discussions I've had, when we talk about cost recovery, this is something that we haven't put into practice because we haven't had that clarity of how to go about doing it. So it's not something that we have been doing very often, where we go into private property.
Okay, thank you. And so in the public, you know, some of you have probably noticed, you know, graffiti from time to time. And it's, it is challenging because if it is on, on private property, they are a victim as much as, you know, if not more than the community. And so to, you know, require them to do something or we're going to do it and we're going to charge you or we're going to cite you, that's sort of insult to injury. Yet at the same time, there is a cost borne somewhere. So do, does the city abate it and the entire, you know, all the taxpayers bear that cost? That could be the decision. Or do we say, when you have a business, sometimes that's the cost of doing business? And, and so it's a balance right now. And that's something, we're not making a decision tonight, but we're going to ask staff to come back with something kind of moving in a certain direction. So just to kind of set the stage for this evening. So I will look to council, I'll just kind of start on my right and come on down and see what questions we might have for chief, councilmember Nysom. No questions? Mayor Pro Tem Funk?
Yes, a couple of things. One is, isn't an option in the courts to ask people who are convicted of, of putting a, of tagging, of putting out graffiti to as part of their things, not just, not just to pay for that, but to have, to certain number of community service hours of graffiti removal. We have to go, go through and paint out those tags and learn to clean it up.
Yes, that is, that is an option. As a matter of fact, I believe in our ordinance, it does include that as one of the options that we have to ask, or not to ask, but to mandate that the person if found and convicted is not only responsible financially, but also manually to come and fix it for us.
And do we have the capacity to supervise that or?
In there lies the problem. Again, it's going to take staff time, it's going to take coordination. So, and it takes cooperation from the individual. So therein lies the problem of trying to make that actually happen.
Yeah, it's not particularly designed for efficiency. It's much more designed for the incentive to stay in compliance with not doing that again. On a different sub-point, in your list of options in the staff report, that one of them that you read was conditioning the issuance of encroachment permits for encroaching objects or structures to include deterrence or abatement conditions. Could you translate that?
Yeah, so basically, we can, we can make it a condition when people are putting in a request to get an encroachment permit, that there's a condition that they understand that they all have to have a plan for deterrence and abatement or understand that if their property, or agree that if their property is vandalized or they get graffiti, that they will take care of it. So it makes a condition of getting that permit.
And this would be, if I can jump in, this would be, say, if somebody has a retaining wall that's encroaching in the right of way and they get a temporary encroachment permit to have that wall in the right of way, that'd be a condition with that permit issuance that they would have to abate that graffiti within a certain timeframe.
Okay. And is, do we have a sort of, in our good collegial relationships between departments, a process set up so that the wisdom of those who have to deal with graffiti and remove the graffiti are able to circle back and inform the folks who are working with people who are building stuff and doing permits to try to not have the kinds of structures that are graffiti magnets?
I can tell you on city property, we put anti-graffiti wherever we can on buildings, sides of buildings, on any city property. You know, signs, a lot of times the traffic signs have an additional clear layer on there that it'll wipe right off. That those signs are more expensive, I can tell you, than just the regular traffic signs. Those are the things we're doing. I believe Director Dunn Smart is not here tonight, but I believe like planning may, you know, suggest certain treatments of buildings on private property. But a lot of times, I don't think it's typically graffiti related that they're looking at. What I mean, a split face like wall or block wall or something like that is a lot harder to remove graffiti from than say a burnished block wall.
Yeah, thanks. It is something that, that comes up at design review committee periodically is to put the extent to which a particular approach to a wall or usually it's a wall is more or less likely to attract graffiti and more or less easy to get it off of there cheaply and quickly. Okay, those are my questions for right now.
Councilmember Borbo?
Thank you, mayor. I have some comments, but I'll ask a couple of questions and save the comments for later. Because you know, I did graffiti abatement for three years or so for the police department as a volunteer. And I'm very disturbed to see this picture. I hope it's, I hope it's an old picture.
It is an old picture.
Okay, because I have this graffiti on my phone from 2015. I hope this person, this person is still not out there. Not this, not this particular wall, but this particular style, this particular tag or not artist. I would not go so far as to call any of this art. But so, yeah, I'm glad to know that's an old picture. Because in my experience doing this, graffiti is almost always people 15 to 25. But the other, the thing, the question I have for you, because also in my experience, I mean, there was one time we identified somebody who was graffiti and then there was another time the cops literally ran into them, you know, in the act. But do you have any idea how many, if any, individuals we have successfully identified and cited for graffiti? Because I suspect it's extremely low number as a practical matter. Is that correct?
Yeah, you're, you're correct. The number is going to be low. Because, you know, obviously usually this is done under the cover of nighttime. I would like to indicate that probably what, two weeks ago, we had a, one of our dispatchers, we have a closed circuit television within our dispatch and they identified somebody in the pedestrian bridge doing exactly this. And they dispatched officers to it and we did catch one of the two individuals that were seeing graffiti inside that pedestrian bridge and, and our plaza outside. So we caught that individual. However, you're correct in your assumption that it is usually not the case. Usually we are responding to a graffiti that has already occurred.
Right. And so, I mean, as a practical matter, as much as we want to talk about, you know, holding youths liable or looking your parents liable, it's a practical matter. That's going to be an extremely rare outcome, even with the ubiquity of security cameras nowadays.
Correct, yes. I would agree with that statement.
Okay. And so it goes back to kind of what the mayor said. I mean, we have property owners who are essentially victims. And the question is, are we going to impose a cost on them? And I assume, you know, right now, our ordinance has always stated, because I was doing it, it's 48. We can notify them and say you have 48 hours to do it. But we could do a much lengthier period.
Absolutely.
So that, you know, we focus on the ones that have been there a long time. They're very much in the public eye, you know, and they're an eyesore, like in a bank downtown. You know, as opposed to the backside of a garbage enclosure that, you know, maybe the public doesn't see. We could change the timeframe to be a very long timeframe.
And typically, the ordinances, examples of ordinances that I've seen have indicated that there's 48 hours to remove it. If, if that doesn't happen, the next step occurs and the next step is going to If, if that doesn't happen, the next step occurs and the next step is going to be a letter of notification. And that letter of notification is then going to give another timeframe of when that needs to be done. So that, so even within those, the way it's written or suggested, you would have more time than 48 hours in real, in reality.
And then communicate there's been the capacity to, on the part of the city to solicit new volunteers. I had stopped doing it because the chief didn't want me hanging around the station as a city councilman. So.
Not this chief, right? It was someone similar to you, right?
Yeah, some years later, he asked me to show an individual who, who was also going to get some Kiwanis involved. You know, what I did and how I did it and that sort of stuff. And I know they did it for a while, but we currently have no volunteers that you know of that are actively engaging in graffiti abatement?
No, we, we, we don't currently have any, no.
Okay.
Charles, they've aged out.
What's that?
I said they've aged out.
Yes, yes.
I'm not aware.
Oh, yeah. I still have the graffiti remover in my trunk though, so. But any case, okay. Thank you. And have some comments, save some comments for later.
All right, just a quick question on, to get some perspective on how big or small the graffiti problem is in our town. Do you, do we have an estimate of how much is being spent annually to combat this collectively? So whether, if it was one person that was going to be absorbing all the cost, approximately how much are we looking at in an annual expense for this type of wrongdoing at that number? I know it's kind of a difficult question.
So, so Public Works, we, we haven't been abating any graffiti on private property. So since Councilmember Borbo retired from the graffiti abatement business, there's been pretty much, I believe, more or less voluntary compliance by the property owner. So Public Works has not done any graffiti abatement on private property, just public. But we do track all the hours. So down at the maintenance yard, we, we track every hour and the materials spent to abate graffiti. And I can tell you, the last five years, it's been exponential. It's gone up a lot. And just about every couple of days, I see new graffiti. It, it does take a lot of our staff time. But when they do catch somebody, often we'll work with the district attorney to get restitution. But a lot of times, you know, it doesn't even come close to the time. And then they want us to show up to court and testify and everything else. So there's a ton of time that is unaccounted for.
And I, I understand that. And one of the things that we're, we're wanting to try to figure out is, you know, the cost recovery. And, and just to put it in simplest terms, nothing I'm suggesting that this be, but if the city was to say, you know, we will cover all the costs. Anytime graffiti comes up, we'll do it. We have the staff, the materials, et cetera, et cetera. Give me a range of, what are we looking at? A hundred thousand dollars a year, $10,000 a year? I mean, approximately what is, how big is the problem and the task? Or I'm just curious. Whether it's many, many individuals paying for it, whether it's volunteers or whatever, I'm just curious as to just how big the problem is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I understand the, the question and I, I'm not prepared to answer how much. But I can tell you that when I was doing my research for, for this report, I would take a walk around and just start to kind of see, okay, where am I actually seeing graffiti? And as I walked through there and as I was really looking for it, I was surprised to find how much I was finding. So there's a lot, there's a lot out there. And if we were to actively start abating this at the cost of the city, I would assume that it would rack up. But I don't know the answer to that question.
All right, thank you.
And we could come back with that. I can tell you, I mean, we can get the numbers and report back to council on what that is for Public Works.
I think it would be helpful to know, because you can say, well, here's what it was this year or something. But if you say, you know, per occurrence, you know, and again, there's going to be a bigger thing, a smaller thing. But coming up with some sort of an estimate to be able to say, you know, hey, if we have, you know, if we run into 50 of these a month and it's a thousand dollars each time, God, I hope not.
And I can tell you that our, our staff is abating graffiti, if not daily, every couple of days. So I mean, there's, you know, there's probably at least a full, full staff day. You know, eight hours per week that is being abated.
So here's a question I have, and this is before we go out to, to public comment, because I want to get public comments specifically on the graffiti. If staff were to draw up what you would consider like a, a fair to, you know, all the residents and businesses, if fair are possible, something that takes care of the problem, what would you want? You're the ones with the experience. You're the ones on the ground trying to do it. I mean, I think we probably all like the idea of trying to get a volunteer crew going again. But that probably can't be the only thing.
We've talked about, I think, a most efficient process, back to essentialism and staff isn't doing it per se. But I think, I think it'd be fair to maybe do an RFP to a third party painter in town. So we're still, we're not taking business away from the private sector. Solicit that fairly, see what the unit cost is per square foot or however they cost that out. Have that person on retainer that we can call after we send a notice politely, giving someone a couple of days to try and fix it. If it isn't fixed, calling the painter, having it fixed and sending them a bill for our actual cost because they're a victim, you know, in that sense. And then if they didn't pay the bill to send it to collections, that'd be very efficient for us. And not put an assessment on their tax bill or tax lien, or that's a lot more work for the staff. That would be my.
It'd be a way that you could track the cost to year over year, similar to the homeless and camera clubs.
And would it be possible to then, to, to have a volunteer, you kind of reignite a volunteer program within that? Or does that make it? I'm not seeing a lot of hope on that side.
Absolutely is possible. I mean, one of the goals that we have is to reestablish volunteers. One of our goals is to reestablish cadets. There's a lot of different goals that we have, but we're, we're looking at, you know, pushing those goals off as we're entering into accomplishing other goals such as public safety facilities and then not having the ability to reestablish those. So, so I don't, I look at that and see that as, as, as not quite an option yet, but definitely something we want to do long term.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, I think I'll go out to public comment unless there's any other questions that need to be asked. All right, let's go and go to public comment. Welcome to any speakers on this item in chambers and then we'll go to Zoom.
Good evening again, Council Jeff Hosland. I know that Kiwanis has been the volunteer group for a long time. And I know I activated our group a couple of months ago because we had graffiti underneath the bridge at Monterey in Del Rio. It was taken care of. And I don't remember the procedure, but I'm not sure, but Sherman Williams might be donating the paint, if I'm not mistaken. And it used to go through the police department and they would say, here's this, here's that. And they would immediately try and go out and do the bridges or the walkways between the high school or whatever those areas were for, you know, to repaint those areas that are very visible on our public property. Now, I have witnessed some other graffiti that's happened, which would be beyond the scope, I'm sure, such as the sidewalks that I saw a couple of weeks ago that were graffitied. And I don't think that's within the realm of even a painter to be able to get it off the sidewalk without the proper machinery, which some of our local businesses do have. For, for private, I have noticed a couple of things. There was one that was pretty nasty, if you will, on the south side of town. And they got the paint off of their building, but it took them about six weeks. And I think it was because of weather to repaint that side of the building. So I think they were very cautious about it. But what happens is when you take black paint off, let's say, an orange substance, you still have a white outline of something pretty nasty. So I'm not so sure how we address that on that end. I do know that we've had a lot of graffiti on the backside of some of the trash containers for dumpsters, for instance, by the shopping centers. And I know Kiwanis has tried to attack them quickly. The other things that you have are the electrical boxes, if you will, the big, I'm blanking on what they're called. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And those get graffitied. And, you know, I know volunteer groups have taken care of that too, but you know, you have to deal with a public committee sometimes to do that. My concern with going to an outside painter is, is not so much for pub, for our public facilities, but private, is that they're going to have to pay prevailing wage and have somebody come in. I think there has to be a reasonable timeframe to make that adjusted because you're going through those things. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosland. Anyone else here in chambers wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom who would like to speak on this item, you can raise your hand. I am not seeing any. So go ahead and close public comment and bring that back to council and to staff. Prevailing wages doesn't strike me as the type of thing that prevailing wage would apply to. Is that correct?
We were just discussing that. I mean, for competitively bid private painter on private property through an abatement process isn't a public works project. So Fleishman can look that up, but that strikes me as a little odd.
But by comparison, I mean, I assume that the weed abatement contractors we hire to do work on private property are not required to pay prevailing wage because that would be an analogous situation. I assume they're not, correct?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. That's something I'd have to take a look into.
Okay. I'm good at analogies.
All right, all right. So, so let's look at some of the things that, the things that we were talking about, kind of, you know, volunteers. How do we try to, you know, get back, get back costs? I, because I think if staff has talked about this, they're the ones dealing with it and they know how to, you know, the, the idea of how to do this as efficiently and as effectively as possible. I would be inclined for them to go this third party route in billing for that actual cost and seeing, you know, if it is possible to have either donations and/or volunteers, if it's easy to be implementing that or say, you know, hey, you and Kiwanis, you want to take this on? Great. And maybe in a particular area that is highly trafficked. And so, you know, obviously they're not going to be out there five times a week doing graffiti, but maybe there's something that they could kind of be in charge of if, if they want to be or another group. But that's sort of the, the sense that I would be getting, getting a nod over here. Yes. Would that be, would you be inclined, Mayor Potem?
I have a couple of concerns about that. One is that we are already, I think, as we think about this and being like weed abatement and having a cost recovery process and that kind of thing. And with, and I think maybe that's the wrong mental model for this. Because with weed abatement, we are trying to modify people's behavior regarding their own property. And, you know, we all have to get out there with our weed whackers or in our garden gloves and pull our weeds and keep that low. Whereas this is about modify, the, the behavior we want to modify is out there in the community. And our business owners and property owners are already victims of, you know, the, the folks. And they have no control over the action that's, that's generated.
So are you inclined to have them not pay anything at all?
So I'm, I'm inclined to have a process where we could at least have, you know, a request a waiver of those costs for small businesses and, and individuals. If you, you know, if they have this, you know, a few times, to be able to have a, to have the graffiti quickly abated and have that charge waived. So that it's not a huge burden on that. I don't want to be sending small businesses trying to struggle downtown to collections over a graffiti bill because they don't have the capacity to respond quickly. So that's my thought.
I have some concerns about using a third party. I do think we, though, that we need to give this, give staff some tools to use for lingering problems. I mean, my first preference, having done it, is it would be to have volunteers do it. And I can tell you very much so that if you have an active program, that at first you spend time doing it. And if you, if you go along doing it, you spend less and less time because the little punks, for lack of a better word, they realize somebody's going to come along and wipe out my thing in a couple of days. And, and they, they kind of lose their motivation. And I, and I could, I mean, a perfect example is when I started, I used to go by in Vons a couple of times a week and always have to wipe stuff out. And then it was a week and then it was two weeks and then it was three weeks. Because they knew some guys come along and wiping out my stuff. So an active enforcement program leads to success. So I, I mean, my first preference would be to have volunteers. It doesn't take a ton of time. And in terms of, you can't bill on a per instance, because I mean, you could hop out of the car, wipe out graffiti on a newspaper holder or a garbage dumpster in a minute. Or it could be like that wall and you got to get out your paint and your roller and, you know, and that's 20 minutes. And then a big thing on a difficult surface, like split face mason, or even worse, you know, could be an hour and you're still not happy. But I mean, so it, it doesn't take necessarily a ton of time. My, my preference would be that we actively solicit some service clubs. And I'm not, maybe think of somebody else, maybe some youth groups or something even to, to, to take an active role in this on, on a Saturday or something. But my biggest concern is that, you know, these, these private property owners are victims of this crime. And so I'm very reluctant to say, okay, now we're going to play, you know, hardball with you. On the other hand, if somebody, let's say, leaves that kind of wall up for six months, you know, or three months, and it's an eyesore in the middle of town on a highly trafficked invisible area, we, that is the staff, need some sort of mechanism to, you know, encourage, hey, you need to get rid of that. You know, like sending them a notice saying, you need to get rid of this. And then, you know, give them 30, 30 days or two weeks or something and say, then, you know, kind of just ratchet it up. That if you don't do this, we will do it and it will cost you a lot more if we do it. So I think you need the tools, but I don't, I really want to be reluctant, I'm really reluctant to, you know, put more burden on the victim until they've really demonstrated they're not dealing with it.
So a couple of things on that. One, I don't want something going three to six months in a prominent area of town. And then we're trying to follow up. So there would need to be much quicker than that. And nobody's trying to penalize these business owners. We could certainly make the policy decision that all of the taxpayers are going to bear the cost of graffiti, that we could do that. We would have to look for the budget.
That's the right answer.
So we're not looking at, and correct me if, if I am misunderstanding this, Mr. Lewis. What we do with weed abatement is we say, like, this, it's, it's as full cost recovery as possible. And it actually isn't even full cost recovery, but it is a significant amount because it's the amount of the, of the abatement itself. And then the cost of staff time and all of this stuff allocated. So what might be $500 if someone were to just, you know, hire somebody to abate it themselves or get out there on an afternoon with weed whacker, could end up being $1,200 because you have the rest of the allocated cost. What we're talking about here is, this is what it costs the painter to go out and do it. We're not talking about staff time and all these allocated costs. So it would be much less than that. And so I think what you're, what you're hearing is obviously a concern that we don't want to penalize small business owners or, or any business owner. But we're also not looking at the taxpayers bearing 100% of this cost. So I don't know if Councilmember Darris has any other input, but maybe with this, with this conversation, does that give you what you need to kind of try to put something together and come back with some options? And I will ask Councilmember Darris if you have any other input.
I think it's been hit. I, I don't like to see the victims, I mean, Charles said that, you know, if you got this wall and it's got the graffiti on it for six months and you haven't done anything with it, then we're going to do it and we're going to bill you. Well, I don't see how that's any different, whether you build them, whether you told them to remove it within the first week. Either way, you're asking the victim to pay for the mitigation of the, of the graffiti. It is a difficult tight rope to walk, you know, what, how, how are you going to recover it? Should the taxpayers, should the city, which is the taxpayers, put the bill for that? You know, I'm, I'm more inclined to say, that's part of the cost of running the city. Because I think if my house was a target, say on the corner, and I happen to have a big wall on one side and it's, and it's a big canvas for, for graffiti. You know, I'd get really annoyed that I'm having to spend five, 600 bucks a month just to keep the graffiti off of it. And that'd be even more annoyed if I got a bill from the city because, because other people are graffitiing my house. So I don't know what the answer is. I just don't like to see victims charged for something that they are targeted for.
I think to answer your question, Mayor, we wanted to hear what the council's temperature was on abatement, how aggressive we should be or not be, because we have the tool to deal with it in the code. That was the bigger question. So it sounds like a majority of the council sees, is concerned about victimization or being punitive to the private property owner. I don't know that we have a lot of resources to, I wish we had another Councilman Borbo Jr. out there to do the volunteer graffiti program. I'm not sure what that looks like. We could talk to the service clubs and see if they're interested. Volunteer management's always challenging. And I don't, we weren't trying to create a whole new government program either. It was more just, does the council have an appetite for some level of abatement? I don't hear it a lot. So let us go back to the drawing board and see if there's something that's more, more direct, some options. In the meantime, we'll continue to. In the meantime, we'll continue to handle public property and we can inquire with the service clubs about their interest in a volunteer program, come back to.
Councilmember Newsom did have a question.
The city ever established like a victims fund or restitution fund for those that get found guilty of it or something that gets paid into it? So that if business owners find they're in a situation where it's happening time and time again, there's resources that they can apply for, get allocated out of that type of fund?
I'm not aware of a program at the city level, the district attorney's office does have such a fund that's available and can be drawn on in those situations.
Can the city be a part of that program? Say we have someone that's being found guilty of graffiti in multiple jurisdictions in San Luis Obispo County? If the DA found that we're one of the, you know, places that they have been found to, you know, just choose to render their services to, that we would be able to apply for some of that funding to cover the costs of cleanup?
I think the, the district attorney's fund would be specifically for the victim in this particular situation, unless the city was the victim of the graffiti incident. And the city might not be able to apply directly, but could certainly put the property owner in direct contact with the district attorney to seek recovery from that fund.
Okay, thank you. So perhaps staff, as you said, Mr. Lewis, you kind of have the temperature and we would kind of like to get a, get an idea of the cost, what, what is it costing? If we had a third party do it and, and even if it was completely borne out by the taxpayer, what would that look like? If we were to try to do a partial cost recovery, what could that look like that, again, isn't penalizing businesses incredibly? Is that, okay? Is it necessary? Go for it.
I would appreciate it if the staff would at least look into the possibility of having someone hire members of our unhoused community to do this, this kind of work. It doesn't take a lot, lot of skill and they are the, the folks who are unhoused or, and unsheltered are most, the ones most likely to see this work happening. And could be potentially partners with the city in this effort and help us to beautify the community in a way that would be constructive.
Okay, let's move on to shopping carts.
Mayor, City Council, the other topic that we wanted to discuss tonight under the community claim this is in the possibility of introducing an ordinance to cover shopping carts. So if you were to drive around town, I'm sure you would see that we have shopping carts throughout town and they do cause some issues. There are other cities like Memorial Bay and San Luis Obispo that do have ordinances that are on their municipal codes. Some of the topics that I wanted to breach in this presentation are some of the, some of the things that I saw that were prevalent in those ordinances. Those would include a, for the businesses, some mandates, cart containment mandates and cart retrieval mandates. There are also some prohibitions that were put into those ordinances for just your normal citizens, you know, and what they are not allowed to do. And then also some cost recovery topics. So real quick to get into the first part of that, which is the cart containment and cart retrieval mandates. So this would be a mandate on the businesses, retail establishments. And some of the examples for a cart containment mandate would be to mandate the fact that each one of the carts are outfitted with a sign that indicate, that identify who the owner is. And this would have to be in pursuant to section 22435.1 of the Business Professions Codes, which is important because that's what allows us to take, to arrest somebody or cite them for a misdemeanor for having that cart. Another option is to mandate them to provide notice at their establishment that removal of carts are, is not authorized. Another example would be to mandate the fact that they actually have some kind of physical barrier to keep people from bringing, taking carts out, whether that be, you know, a, a brake that's put on the cart or chains at certain areas, things of that nature. And then finally, a mandate that would mandate them to train new and existing employees on these, on the containment mandate and also on the provisions of state law. The ordinances I saw also included a, an exemption, you could, you could have an exemption from a containment plan if you had a smaller retail establishment such as 10 carts or less, something of that nature. And also there was a exemption for establishments that had gone with the retrieval mandate. So in other words, if you abide by the retrieval mandate, you did not have to abide by the containment mandate. Speaking of the retrieval mandate, this would be a mandate on the establishments to have a plan of how they would go about either retrieving physically the carts or coming up with a plan to help with the cost recovery. In other words, some examples of that is implementing a plan to retrieve shopping carts with three, within three days of the cart's removal. Another option is provide on-call or regularly scheduled employees or contractors for patrol to go around and then see if there are carts that they see and retrieve their own carts. Another option is authorize the immediate impoundment by the city of abandoned shopping carts not in compliance with section 22435.7 of the Business Code. Essentially what that means is that in order for us to impound a cart, it has to abide by that, the initial Business and Professions Codes that I mentioned, which has the identifying marks on, on the cart. This would be the establishment in writing giving us permission to impound your cart without that, that sign. And then also the, another option is after 30 days of storage, they can authorize the city to dispose or sell the shopping carts that we have impounded. And again, there are the same exemptions that are possible, 10 carts or less, or if they abide by the containment plan, they would not have to abide by retrieval. I also mentioned the fact that there are some municipal codes that included prohibitions for individuals. And real quick, the, the things that I saw that were prevalent in those ordinances were prohibitions of the unauthorized removal of shopping carts. There were two, the abandoning, abandoning of shopping carts off the business property, re-altering or tampering with the shopping cart or removal or obliteration of the serial number. And possession of any shopping cart not located on the premise or of the retail establishment. And finally, within the, so the topic of the carts, we have the, the cost recovery. So this is basically cost recovery as it pertains to businesses and how the businesses could help with the cost recovery. Some of these options that could be considered is reimbursement for cities' actual costs for retrieving and storing or the disposal of shopping carts not in compliance with the section of the Business and Professions Code. Another option, there are fines and fees as outlined in the, the Business and Professions Code with carts that do comply with that code. An administrative fee for each daily occurrence of the impoundment of an establishment's cart in excess of three daily occurrences during a specific time period. And then there's always, always the option of no implementation of fines or costs for recovery. And then the last portion that I wanted to cover under the shopping cart is there's also the option, again, with municipal language in there that authorizes the implementation of hiring contractors to retrieve. The city could hire contractors or contract with contractors to retrieve and return abandoned carts to the establishments or take them to the city owners. With that, I'll stop there because the next slide would be for another topic.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, in here you had said something about the, you know, disposal or sale, is there actually a, like a secondary market for shopping carts?
No. I don't think so.
Would that be, I was, I was going to ask Nick the same thing, whether or not that was because of the metal or is it because the shopping cart itself?
I, I don't, I don't know, I don't think so, maybe triple seven.
Maybe a new grocery store coming to town and you had some things.
They're not cheap, I can tell you that, brand new, they go for a few hundred dollars, so.
So currently, what happens is we see abandoned carts, you know, on streets and street corners and oftentimes it has, you know, someone's belongings in it, possibly someone from the unhoused community. Other times you just see them, you know, empty laying around somewhere. And the current procedure is we get notified and then we go pick it up and take it to the courtyard, is that correct? And then we dispose it of it after a certain amount of time?
Essentially, that, that is correct and also, you know, we have the mandates that if there is property in the carts that we have to mark that property, if it's abandoned, if we believe it's abandoned, we have to mark that property. And then if we wanted to be able to recover any costs, we'd have to give notice to the retailer and give them three days to come pick up the cart. So if we were to, if we were not to have some of the conditions that we talked about in this ordinance, we would have to wait those three days before we, we'd have to leave the cart on the sidewalk for three days before we could get it. So that we could go through a process of trying to get cost recovery if we chose to do so.
The other thing is if it's abandoned, it'll get picked up or dropped off, Councilmember Borbeau has, has been doing some of that as well. And then it gets brought down to the courtyard and then once a month, we call and, or email the grocery stores and tell them, we have your shopping carts, please come get them. And we email again a week later and say, we still have your shopping carts, come get them. There's only one grocer that actually is actively coming down and getting them. And if they don't, then they become recycling metal.
Okay, and similar to the graffiti, can you tell us what the, the cost right now is of staff doing that? Have we kind of allocated that out just so we know what the cost is that we're bearing?
I, I don't have that answer for the actual costs that we have.
Okay, and, you know, again, just for, for the public, this is another, this is similar to graffiti, a situation where individuals are taking carts for their own use for some period of time, leaving them along the, the, the street. And then everybody else is bearing the brunt and so we look at, you know, do you penalize the grocery store or the, the business who has that cart? And say, well, you've got to pay to, to get this back when property has essentially been stolen from them. Or do we, as the taxpayers, decide that, that we're going to bear that cost of keeping the city clean and it's just, you know, the cost of, cost of being a city? And so that's kind of the kind of policy decisions that we're looking at and giving staff some direction on. So with that, I can see Councilmember Borbeau has been with the mic for a while, so.
I did have some questions and you alluded to one of them, Mayor, about the current process though, because I, I've spoken to the Vaughn's manager and the Food for Less manager and some assistant managers, Martin Final. And I, I felt bad because I had been giving, after we were at all at a ribbon cutting near the, you know, the, our water treatment plant and we noticed all the shopping carts through the gate. I was kind of giving Vaughn's a bad rap for not picking up their shopping carts. But then when I spoke to the manager, he informed me, he was going down there personally in his own pickup and occasionally picking some up. But he also told me that, in relation to what you said, Chief, that he would sometimes get calls from the R team officers and he knew them by name. You know, the, hey, there's a cart over, you know, because maybe they had contact with somebody and he said, you know, there's a cart over on Moral Road and if he wasn't busy, he'd go get it. And, and so I want to make sure I understand the process, I won't quibble over details, but in some cases though, we are notifying stores and they're getting them. In other cases, I don't know if we're notifying Public Works or if Public Works is just seeing them, picking them up and, you know, not making a run back to the courtyard right away. But at the end of the day, taking them to the courtyard. Because I'm trying to, you know, how big of a hassle is that? And does it happen all the time or is it just sometimes we do this, sometimes we don't depending on the circumstances?
You, you nailed it with that last comment, I think that a personal relationship has been built between the R team officers and the Vaughn's manager. Because Vaughn's is one of the larger stores that we have, so therefore more, most of the carts are coming from those larger retail establishments. So, you know, we make a concerted effort to get to know the managers of those so we can establish that type of rapport so that we can call them and have them help us out. There are, however, our other entities know that we don't have that rapport. So I think what, you know, an ordinance like this does and what we're requesting is the consideration of this so that we can, we have the ordinance at, at our back to help us if we need.
I can add to that, a lot of the shopping carts down at the courtyard are actually brought down there by the homeless encampment cleanups. So those are actually transported down there and then they're pulled out and they're, you know, stacked up near the entrance.
Got it, and, and some, I know personally, a few of them are recovered during creek cleanup. Now, Chief, I want to make standards, make sure I understand the impoundment thing because as the mayor noted, I mean, to me, this is not effectively stolen property, it is stolen property if somebody removed. Now, some people, you know, they just took it home because they didn't want to carry their groceries, right, and they leave it somewhere near their residence. But a lot of these are taken, they're filled with personal belongings and then, and then maybe abandoned or left temporarily or permanently around. But if somebody is actively going down the street with a shopping cart full of their personal belongings, unless their name is Mr. Vaughn's or, you know, Mr. Food for Less or something, that's effectively stolen property, right?
It is, I agree with your, your assessment. What comes up is the roadblocks and what we can do about that or what we choose to do about that in regards to if we want to cite an individual for being in possession, then we need to be within the code, the Business and Professions Code that we talked about, in our 22435.1. Or, and one of the reasons why we're asking for consideration, when we have an ordinance that prohibits possession of a cart. And then we also have a section within our ordinance that says that our enforcement will be pursuant to Title 12 of our own municipal code, which indicates that we now have the option to enforce it as an infraction, a misdemeanor, a civil issue or an administrative fee. That gives us other options and tools that we can use to address people who are walking down the street with what we believe to be a stolen cart. Which, right now, we don't have that ability, we're limited to that Business and Professions Code, which we know has very specific requirements and it only leads us down one road, which is a misdemeanor. Which we've already been told by the district attorney's office, which we mentioned in a previous meeting, that right now they're not willing to file on those cases. So it's nice to have something that gives us other options when we see that person walking down the road.
Because I mean, we're not, I don't think you or we want to pursue, you know, filing cases and cases of this stuff. But, but having the ability to say, hey, this does not belong to you, you need to remove your stuff so we can return this to the rightful owner, you're saying we could put something in our ordinance to that effect?
Yes, because the, the ordinance, the, the prohibitions that we spoke of would, there are ones that would specifically prohibit the possession of a cart without the authorization from the retail establishment.
What concerns me and I mean, we're going to address this next issue, you know, we're asking, city managers are going to ask for more money for cleanups. It seems to me there's a logical connection, although this is just theoretical on my part, there's a logical connection between people using stolen shopping carts to accumulate large amounts of material that we turn around and are paying a contractor to remove from encampments. And so that there's a, in my mind, there's a direct logical connection between this problem and the next problem.
Agreed, I agree.
That we're dealing with, okay, got it. And anybody's curious, yesterday there were, at the courtyard, there were 38 Vaughn's carts, 17 Smart and Final carts, six grocery outlets, three Rite-Aids, six Big Lots, six Food for Lesses, one Walgreen and 7.99 cents, and strangely enough, two K-Marts.
Those are still around.
K-Marts, and now there are 10 less because I, yeah, now there's five less Food for Lesses and five less Vaughn's. Because I took them back, but I assume that a Kmart is fair game, I can, I can walk up and down the street with a Kmart cart, right? And, and my concern being that a large number of 99 cent carts are not going to end up in rotation if you, because once a store is gone, there's no. All right.
But that would be a question, so once a store is gone, like a Kmart, or if any other store leaves and they just abandon the carts, what then?
Then we'd have to dispose of it ourselves.
Okay, so that would be written into the ordinance or something, so people can't just be walking around with them, we could take those.
Correct, yeah.
Councilmember Newsom.
So as we look at the cart containment mandates, we have previously talked about locking wheel mechanisms. I know some establishments such as Ross already have locking wheels where they're not allowed to leave the actual store, which is very cumbersome when you have a child in tow and you use it for a car seat. You can't seem to get anything you bought out of the store, so they then allow you to park in the fire lane, which I'm sure the fire chief is thrilled about, to load. which I'm sure the fire chief is thrilled about, to load that car and restrict traffic. So as we look at some of those mandates, I think Ross is a little bit extreme. But the locking wheel mechanisms, those can be used for the parking lot perimeter as well. Is that correct?
That is correct. That there is an option for that. Yes.
Okay. The cost estimates, is that currently why a lot of retailers do not use because it's very costly?
Yes. And then that, that's, that's a good point. I was talking to the chief of Moral Bay and I was asking some questions in regards to the, um, if, how the retail establishments felt about being mandated to put some of these physical barriers on. And their response was actually to the chief of Moral Bay was a pleasant one in the sense that we actually, they actually liked the fact that there was a containment mandate. And the reason why is because now it gave them an opportunity to go to their corporate office. For example, in Moral Bay, they, it's Albertson's was their biggest one, biggest store that they have. Once they were, had a mandate in place, uh, the manager of the Albertson's let their corporate office know and the corporate office wants to be in compliance with that. And now all of a sudden they were able to get a corporate office to give them the budget that they needed to, to, to do that. Whereas when it wasn't a mandate and it was a choice, uh, the, you know, budget wasn't necessarily there for that.
And then if we do look at the containment mandate of such things, such as locking wheels, is there a grace period or an implementation, implement, am I even going to go there? Is there a timeframe in which they have to implement that? Six months, three months? What is that timeframe?
That is not something that we have put in our suggestion, but it is definitely something that is an easy, easy to add for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Pretem Funk.
Yes. So this is, this is sort of a systematic issue different from, we debate lots of individual properties, but this is a smaller number of businesses. Is there a way to set this up so that it creates a reasonable business opportunity for somebody to be the shopping part, cart, pickup, cleanup, fix, deliver person? And, and once a week they go through and they get all the stuff that showed up at the court, yeah, corp yard and get the, you know, one cart back to Walgreens and six carts back to Smart and Final or whatever it was that council member Borbo just did. And everybody, and each of those businesses chips in a little to get their stuff back. And in turn they're required to either have, they were all required to have them properly labeled. So this can be done and so that they don't have to sit around on the street corner for three days. For us to have authority to deal with it. And then, um, and then all, then they can get back to the business establishments in reasonable order. Or they have a cart, a containment thing and get exempted from having to pay into the fund for this business.
Yes. And then, and I think that would probably fall under one of the discussions that we had regarding the retrieval plan, which, uh, one of the options that we brought up was the fact that the retail establishments could definitely have the option of contracting or employing individuals to be part of the retrieval plan. So, so that, so having people go around and collect them, I think would definitely be something that would be an acceptable portion of a retrieval plan by a business.
Yeah. Cause it seems like the city shouldn't have to hire somebody to do that, but that it could be a, a reasonably easy way to get that accomplished. Do you happen to know what the, the rough cost is of those kinds of containment systems? I recall some years ago when we were looking at this question, uh, back when Roberta was on the council, that it was something like a $70,000 issues. I'm assuming it's quite a bit more than that now, or at least a little bit more than that.
And, and there are different options. So, so essentially the, the thought process is that the containment mandate would be that the retail establishment present us with a containment plan. And that we would have to essentially agree that yes, this is a containment plan that we feel is acceptable for that particular business. So it doesn't have to be the most expensive one out there. It doesn't have to be the locking wheels. If their establishment is something they could create an acceptable containment plan, which is using chains at the entrances or exits, whatever, something of that nature or another physical barrier, then that could be, that could possibly be very acceptable as well. So it doesn't have to be these. And, uh, but to answer the first part of the question, I, I don't know what the current costs are when it comes to those braking systems.
Okay. And have we explored the opportunity with Echo or anybody else of, of somebody employing our unhoused community to fix the carts, clean them up, get them back? Or at least fix the carts and clean them up.
Currently, no, I have not, I have not reached out to them and asked them if that's, uh, if they have anybody with that skill set or not.
Employment opportunity.
Well, you haven't really done anything yet until we get direction from the council on your interest in this program.
Sure. Other council questions? So.
Just a comment. I think this is, you know, when I talked about how the cost should be transferred through. I think in this case, this, this would be a possibly a cost of doing business. And what the chief said, you have a choice of a containment mandate or a retrieval mandate. The establishment would, would be able to choose. There's going to be a cost associated with it, but it is their equipment. They should be able to keep it corralled. And it would be up to them to choose which expense they would, they would like to incur to keep their equipment on their property. In this case, I don't think the city should be footing the bill for retrieval and whatnot. But I think, uh, I think the businesses should take some responsibility. And it's unfortunate, but, um, you know, that's, businesses change over the years. The way retail has changed with the way even checkout is done, it gets more and more expensive with new technology. And this is an unfortunate technology that's, I think is necessary. And I think, um, the businesses should be responsible.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, I'll go out to public. All right. Any member of the public machine to speak in chambers? Welcome, Mr. Osland.
Good evening. Once again, Jeff Osland. I think we need something. I'm not sure what that something is for carts. I can tell you when the 99 cent store first opened, that was a disastrous thing when you were trying to go to your car and they would lock up. So I, I'm not so sure the locking mechanism is great. Let's say you shopped at Vons and you were heading down towards Rite Aid with your cart because you didn't move your car five times in a parking lot. You can't do it. So I think the locking thing in some places would work great, like Food for Less, but I don't think it would work great in other areas. I think if there was signs up that said, no carts can leave the premise, then that might give the tools that the chief is asking for to be able to grab them. And then I think maybe that problem goes away of having stray carts all the time. Could be a possibility, just like painting all the time. Because now it's stolen property and that could be in the ordinance where they have to have something of that nature to go from there. For your funny tidbit, uh, the old grocery outlet carts that you see, along with the K-Marts, were all acquired by the previous owner of Grocery Outlet. They have them out back their store right now because another store is buying them and they all bought bright red ones. So you can see them and they can retrieve them now. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other members of the public in chambers, anyone on the, on Zoom that would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. Seeing none, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring that back to council. So I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues and just sort of general direction, it seems like the, in terms of the signage and permission to mandate without the sign, like that would be easy enough to do and would give, uh, give staff the tools that they need. And then giving the, the establishments an opportunity to come up with a containment or a retrieval plan so that it's not a one size fits all. And because, you know, clearly if, you know, if, if Vons says, oh, we'd love to do a locking mechanism. All we got to do is tell corporate and that, that handles it for us. But then you could have a grocery outlet that's like, hey, we can't possibly absorb that cost. And well, we don't want them to have to do that then. So if, if there is that opportunity to kind of pick and choose your, your plan, that could be, I, I don't know how you write that into an ordinance, but that's what you guys are for. Other, Mayor Pretem Funk.
I concur in all of this and, and, and think we need to do this with some sensitivity to the overall cost to the businesses. But it is a cost of doing business. And I think the other thing we need to look at is, um, I'd really be interested in what are our team folks and in discussion with Echo and, and the folks who are currently unhoused in the community, who are, you know, the source of the shopping carts that council member Borbo and I pulled out of the creek together. The, uh, can, what option for storage of belongings might reduce the frequency with, with, with which folks who are unhoused until we can get them housed, you know, are, are going around with, you know, stuff, so much stuff that they need a shopping cart. If they had a place to store stuff, would that make a material difference in how much they actually carry around and the frequency with which those carts move? Because we, because these things feed on each, on each other. As we move encampments, it creates more incentive for people to have their stuff be mobile, which means you see more people running around the community and the vehicle of choice is a shopping cart. And so we, we just get, we're feeding on, you know, feeding this problem. And so I'd like us to, to look at whether some kind of storage option might reduce the need for both encampment clearances and shopping cart infractions.
If I may clarify, are you asking staff to come up with a storage option for unhoused individuals to keep their personal belongings?
I'm asking staff to consider whether, to evaluate whether that would make a material difference in this. And if so, how it might be done.
And when you say make a material difference, you mean if the city were to supply storage?
If the city were supplied storage, if Echo were to supply storage, if the city were to contract for someone to manage storage, um, if this is something, if it, if the overall cost of this problem shrinks in half by doing something like that, there's, then there's money to pay for. There's a potential for a win-win solution here to do less. And I'd like the, the, the city to explore that.
Councilmember.
I've always, you thought it is, you know, that having a place for people to store stuff is, is a, is a good thing to consider. But I would simply instead of having our staff spend time doing it, just have the staff ask Echo. You know, because there are communities or, and there are organizations similar to Echo that do this in other localities. And I've heard about them. I have no idea if they're successful or, you know, if they start off great and have a lot of problems or whatever. But I would simply suggest that maybe staff ask Echo, uh, hey, what do you see as the, the prospects of having a, you know, a personal property storage program at their place? Cause I, I think they would have more expertise on that than our staff would anyway. And we don't want our staff spending a lot of time on that sort of thing. But I think it's a valid concern or comment that one of the reasons people, I don't know why they accumulate so much stuff, but you know, you do, if you're homeless, you do need a, a good place to, you know, store your chains and clothes and your documents and all that kind of stuff. So.
All right. Are we in general agreement then on that kind of direction?
Yeah. I mean, I agree totally that minimum is, you know, they, we can expect these businesses to put up the kind of signage that's necessary to help enforce the ordinance. And I think, you know, before we go too far down the road, we'd want to know what does a containment system cost? Are we talking in $5,000? Are we talking $75,000 for a store? So, because I'd be reluctant to impose that kind of burden on a, on a business. But if it's minimal, uh, and, and like I say, some of them may go, hey, I just, you know, we'll just tell corporate city made us do it. And they'd be happy with that. You know, it might be a very viable thing, but in the meantime, you know, they need to provide points of contact and that. You know, what is their plan for recovering their carts? And I did find out by the way that Food for Less, they have their maintenance guy go around, look for and pick up carts, you know, that they see on, on the street. And, and I think that's partly shown in the smaller number they have, although to be fair to Vons, they are in the center of town where most of our homeless activity is. And so they, by, just by their location, they're going to have the worst problem and that's not their fault.
Councilmember Newsom.
I was just going to say, I don't think that staff should be taking time to ask how the homeless would like us to store their belongings. I've actually asked them out front of Sunken Gardens, what brings them to the point? And some of them have gone to Echo and gotten, gotten rolling bags and bags to keep them in. I think they take a shopping cart on some that I've asked is because it's convenience. It also allows it to not be tagged or removed for 72 hours and they know that. I don't think staff needs to be spending additional time on figuring out how we want to handle their storage. A lot of those people don't want you to touch their belongings. That's why they're with them.
All right. So I'm going to ask, does staff have general understanding of the direction we're looking at going? Our city manager is.
It's not the clearest direction the council's given to staff in the past, but I think you're.
So here, here, here's, here's what I'm hearing is we want to mandate the signage and permission to mandate without the signage. Right? So the things that the chief was talking about. And I think looking at what would it look like if retail establishments could come up with like, say, here are a number of containment or retrieval mandate plans. What would you like to do? Could we come up with a buffet where they say, yep, we, because you could have, you know, 10 different establishments that want, that like four different plans. Great. Then you could have a Vons that says, perfect. We just need to tell corporate and Grocery Outlet is going to want to do something different. So let's come up with something.
The ordinance could refer to that, uh, you file this cost containment plan, um, at this point. And elements could include blah, 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 SP certified police chief on the state, something along that line. Or, okay, I got that. And then regarding the storing of belongings, I think we will just ask anecdotally a few of our colleagues in other cities that may have sheltered, have you noticed a difference? Have you noticed? We'll inquire with Echo. So there'll be a little more homework in this. We'll check in with each of the stores too, on their thoughts and status on it. We just weren't even sure if this was still something the council was interested in. So, okay, that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Onto the encampment cleanup and this should go.
This is the easiest decision.
So I say, yes.
All right. So we're getting the next slide back up there. So this is the last portion regarding the community cleanliness report. And that is the campsite debris removal. Staff is requesting an increase to the current budget. So as we know with the campsites, a lot of debris and material is generated from these campsites. And if you are able to see the picture, you can see a before and an after of one of our encampments and what it looked like before our cleanup efforts and after our cleanup efforts. So you can see the, the difference in, in, in how that contributes to the overall community cleanliness. Currently, the annual budget for encampment cleanup is $50,000 per year. Cost to sustain the necessary levels of cleanup needed exceeds the current budget. And it is anticipated that the need for this service will continue while homelessness continues to be a significant issue in the state. Just to sustain the current level of services, staff recommends an increase of the budget for fiscal, for the fiscal years of, uh, from $50,000 to $80,000 per fiscal year. Additionally, within this discussion, we would like to also request that the budget be moved. Currently, the campsite debris removal budget is budgeted with the parks maintenance budget. And because the police department is intimately involved with identifying areas that need debris pickup, we are the ones who coordinate the job to be done. We supervise the job of being done. Make sure the quality is there. Uh, we do all those things. The only thing we don't do is handle the invoices. Matter of fact, the individuals that are handling the invoices don't have the, uh, the knowledge as to whether or not that job took place, whether or not the job was done properly. So it just seems more of a streamlined process for us to request to have that budget with the, the police department so we could accomplish that in a streamlined manner.
All right. Thank you. Any, I want to say, number one, you, you've been doing a tremendous job. I mean, you know, the, the community's been noticing. I know it's a lot of work. And so we're, we really appreciate this because this is, this is something the community wants. It's important. And so thank you. And certainly costs, costs increasing and the need to do this, I think we can all understand that. Do we have any questions of staff on this?
Just one, I presume Director DeBar that you will not be deeply disappointed to see this go over to the police department.
Well, right now we, I mean, I think initially, um, before we contracted a lot of this out, it was kind of being tracked through parks. kind of being tracked through parks maintenance. But with the art team and cat team addition to the police department, it, it makes a lot more sense for it to, to be in the police. Because right now, we get the invoices, we need to call the cat and our team members and say, okay, we have this invoice and did this work occur, whatever. So a little bit of a essentialism actually that we're, we're doing, so.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and open up to public comment. Any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? I'm seeing none in chambers. Anyone on Zoom, you can raise your hand. I see none. We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back for a motion.
Excuse me. I'm a little approve staff's recommendation to increase the budget for encampment cleanup.
A second.
A motion by councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Funk. Roll call please.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Darris?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Funk?
Yes, Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes by though.
Thank you. On to council announcements and committee reports on our own initiative. Council members, we might make a brief announcement on our activities in the community and also give you any reports on standing committees that we, that we serve on, either in the city or throughout the county. So with that, I'll go from my left to my right. So Councilmember Darris.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, last week, I think it was Monday, I had the privilege of watching the fire department do some training with Templeton. They had one of the Templeton yards there. That was a very educational for me. And it was good to see how well these people work as a team, hardest people, hardest working people on the planet. So we're glad that we have them. It was a great job. I really enjoyed that. Aside from that, APCD meets tomorrow at 9:00 AM. Capsule meets Thursday evening at 5:00 PM. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, I went to the training, fire training on Thursday. It was very informative and, and learned a lot watching them go through what they were doing. Learned they have a real, they have a dummy that weighs 180 pounds that they pull out. So this one was losing weight rapidly as the ball bearings were falling all over the place. But some quick duct tape surgery, they, you know, they were trying to get it back to full weight. Any case, I did attend the most recent, you know, Greater Waste Management Authority at IWM A board meeting. And very pleased that we went over a draft budget that the, that the board will adopt at its June meeting. But in that, the staff had looked at everything and recommended initially reducing the solid waste management fee that the IWM A charges that ends up on people's garbage bills from the current 4.4% to 3.2. But after further consideration, we actually lowered it, we will, are going to lower it to 3.0%. So this is great. They're doing a great job. One of the few agencies that's complying with almost all the state mandates and under all the new state legislation you have to comply with. And doing it with a very, with a minimal staff, doing it effectively. And I would just note that a small portion of that savings, about 0.3%, is due to the county rejoining and achieving some economies of scale and just really great for the county because they were going to have to charge 8.1% if they stayed out on their own. So feel like this is a success story and happy to report on it. So, thank you.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem Funk.
Yes, the Home Services Oversight Council meets as a full entity tomorrow at 1:00. This is a regular bimonthly meeting. This is, at this meeting, we will not be talking about grant allocations because we just did that last month in a special meeting or, yeah, a special meeting. And those recommendations will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 21st, along with an update from staff on progress. May, now that we've reached roughly the 18-month mark of the countywide strategic plan on homelessness, then the staff will be giving an update on some of the progress. It's worth noting that the preliminary numbers for the point in time count that occurred earlier this year came out. And we did see a significant reduction in homeless individuals. And also a reduction in the percentage of individuals who are homeless, who are unsheltered. So we've made progress in both sheltering in general and, and moving people into permanent housing, reflected by things like Echo getting 201 people into permanent housing last year.
Councilmember Newsom. I keep, keep leaving it on. We have a city schools committee meeting tomorrow morning with me and Councilmember Borbo.
Last week I was at the Elks for Youth Week. I gave them a certificate of recognition and supervisor John Pichon was there representing Debbie Arnold. And it's neat to just see, you know, I mean, so many of the service groups do so much for our community and they were giving a donation to the middle school robotics team. So it's really great to see what the middle school does with the robotics. And then they moved to the gray bots and no wonder they're winning so many awards because these kids are getting involved at a young age. So it's great to see that. I had a RTA and Slocog meetings last week with a RTA, the battery electric buses, we'll be testing those on routes nine and 10. Nine, this of course, we'll be testing them, not, not quite doing them yet, but testing them. Our local transportation funds will be about a 5% reduction is the estimate, which that's what we in Atascadero end up using for roads. But the good news is 5307 funds are up, which will decrease RTA's need for LTF from the jurisdiction. So we'll see where those numbers come out. And with Slocog, the real item of note is we did not put a sales tax measure. We did not vote on putting a sales tax measure to the ballot. We voted to not do that. We also had a presentation by Gus Curry, who, he's our legislative consultant, if you will. And he was talking about how do we replace the gas tax and just kind of talking about what some of those options are, what Sacramento's looking at. So of course, vehicle miles traveled, which is something that we've been vehemently opposed to in this county and because it would, would really penalize people in, in more rural type environments who have to, who have to drive so much further than, say, if you're living in a, in a, in a, in a city. And another possible solution is a vehicle registration fee. So, you know, just possibilities out there that are being looked at and something, none of us will have any control over, I'm sure. We also had a REACH roundtable that I attended a couple of weeks ago, along with our city manager, Mr. Lewis, and Josh Cross from the Chamber and Lorelei from, who does our economic development here at the city. And so we talked about things like space, ag tech, workforce housing, all those kinds of things. And so it was really good to get together with our colleagues throughout the county and talk about issues that are important to all of us. And then this Friday, I have the privilege of hosting the mayor's meeting here in Atascadero. With that, I will ask if we have any individual determinations. I don't see any on the agenda, any.
All right. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn to closed session. The city council will now go into a closed session to discuss items listed on that portion of the agenda. And I will ask our city attorney to announce those items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council will be meeting in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 Conference with Labor Negotiator. The city's agency designated representative is James Arlois, the city manager. The employee organizations being discussed are the Atascadero Professional Firefighters, Local 3600, Atascadero Police Association, Service Employees International, Local 620, Mid-Management Professional Employees, Non-Represented Professional and Management Workers and Confidential Employees.
Thank you. With that, I will ask if there are any members of the public wishing to speak on this item. Seeing none, and I don't see any on Zoom either, I'll go ahead and close public comment and we will recess to closed session. And any announcement of reportable actions taken during closed session will be made at the next regular council meeting. Thank you.